And locally as well.
Going toward the planning commission meeting by Tuesday, September 12th. It's four o'clock. What what I have to turn that on. Have to get over by it. Planning question, meeting Tuesday, September 12th is four o'clock and we're going to proceed. We had a field trip yesterday, which I did not attend because I was being cut up by a doctor. But that's okay. Did anyone else go to the meeting? Did you go to the meeting?
Did I go field trip? No.
Field trip? No.
I went.
You went?
But I crossed paths. I missed them, but I did actually go and look at the site and the trees.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, I was three minutes late.
I was about a block away.
Okay.
The hard way. Yeah. Okay, so consent. We have on consent, we have approval of minutes from August 22nd. Does anyone have any additions or comments about the minutes?
No.
No. Okay, can I have a motion?
No need.
Second.
Second.
All in favor of accepting the the minutes from from two weeks ago, we say aye.
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 Opposed? Nobody.
We don't do roll calls anymore?
I don't know. Do we have to?
Not anymore that we're not remote. We did that when we were in the remote setting.
We did have some commissioners absent from the last meeting, though. Commissioners Latasa Dawson and Silva. Are you voting on those or?
Do you need? Do you need time to tell everybody how to how to plug in?
Yeah, I can do that. Members of the public are encouraged to join our meetings via Zoom Gov, a secure service that connects you live with no lag time. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey with a 10 second delay and Comcast channel 25 with up to a 90 second delay. If you'd like to provide public comment, please join the meeting using Zoomer by telephone, making sure to join in time to accommodate delays. To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at iSearchMonterey.org. Since the meeting has begun, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, dial eight three three five six eight 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 six four toll free. Once again, that phone number is eight three three five six eight 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 six four, and it is toll free. Then enter the webinar ID one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. Once again, this meeting's webinar ID is one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. With prompted for a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions for using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. Please turn off TV or computer speakers or go to another room while connected as background noise interferes with the broadcast. Public speakers will be called upon in order of hands raised. There's a three minute time limit for today's meeting. Please stay within that limit. Okay, so.
And staff will note that commissioners can vote on the minutes even if they weren't present for that meeting.
Okay, so since we do not need to vote by roll call, I did record the first Ask Commissioner Brassfield, and then the second was Commissioner Freeman. And those minutes were approved unanimously. Perfect. And that approves the full consent agenda. And I do see no hands raised for public comments on matters not on the agenda in person or in Zoom.
Is there anyone in the audience has a has a comment that's not about a matter that's not on the agenda today? No. Okay, so we're going to go on to the public hearing. I am number three. Number one, consider and approve two Upper Ragsdale Drive amendment to planned unit development permit for a lot line adjustment. And two, addendum to the mitigated negative declaration adopted on November 6, 2002, related to the project applicant and owner montage health. I'm going to do these one at a time. So so what can can we do that? Start start with number one.
Chair, Chair Dawson, I'll have to step down on this. I have a financial conflict of interest with the project architect on the next three items. I'm their landlord and plus we're doing a joint venture project. And for the same reason, I didn't go to yesterday's site meeting.
Aye aye.
So I'll see at seven.
See, see at seven.
You're forgiven. You're forgiven.
Okay.
Okay, we have a staff report for three one.
So we've when was the ex parte? Should it be now or for the hearing? Okay, so Chris Schmidt from our staff will be making the presentation.
Thank you.
Hello, planning commission. My name is Chris Schmidt. I'm a senior associate planner for the city of Monterey, and I've been working with the applicant and and appellant on this project. So we're looking at the final phase of the two per two Upper Ragsdale Drive medical office park development for Montage Health. What we had was an ARC review of an architectural review permit and tree permit that was appealed by two appellants, Montage Health and Lorna Moffett. And then we also have a PUD amendment and a lot line adjustment as part of the action today.
We're just talking about the lot line adjustment now, I think.
So the presentation is formatted, so all three items were I'm going to discuss all three items before the the planning commission makes action. If if we want to go back to any section and I can reiterate, you know, parts of the presentation, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, I'm glad you're playing that ahead.
Yeah. Okay, true. Okay, so so yeah, we'll we'll start with the that's how it is formatted. We'll start with the PUD amendment and lot line adjustment. So anyway, the staff recommendation is to approve the PUD and lot line adjustment. Adopt the mitigated negative declaration addendum and then deny both appeals, but with modified modified conditions of approval. So just some background about the site. So this site is located in the Ryan Ranch area. It is an industrial zone site, which most of Ryan Ranch is is a medical office or other type of office use. And and here you can see the actually, it's not the existing condition. I will show an aerial that shows the existing condition, but but the overall site plan of the area. And then the actual subject location for this proposed project is in yellow. The the new building would be located in that yellow space there. You can see I've also highlighted this green area. The site was actually intended for two buildings in both of those footprints. So in green and in yellow there. Montage has come with their final development of just the one building. So that's what you'll be seeing today. In orange as well, I have highlighted the location of the two new parking lot areas that would be associated with new buildings. So that's what you're seeing there. And so just I just wanted to give a little bit of history of this development. So in in 2002, the council approved a vesting tentative map and a PUD planned unit development application zero one two nine five for 230,000 square feet of medical office on parcels one through four. So there are a total of five parcels at this lot, which is called Lot 27. The development included common open space, parking driveway and other infrastructure improvements on parcel five. A total of nine and a half acres of open space for required of the 21 about 21 acre site. Based on the square footage proposed, 837 parking spaces were required. 916 were approved as part of the PUD. And to date, 170,000 square feet of four buildings totaling 170,000 square feet, 699 spaces landscaping and other improvements have been constructed. And I do have some background information on vesting tentative maps as well. So what VTM's do is they they vest the right to proceed with your development, subject to the laws ordinance and standards in effect at the time of the application submitted, so long as the final map is recorded. In this case, the final map was recorded in 2004. And it was recorded within the 24 month period required as a condition of approval in the original council approval for the vesting tentative map. So the project is vested for this use for the development in those areas. You know, for for the parking, you know, and and this product does reduce parking, but I digress. So here's the here's kind of the true aerial site plan view of of the site. And so you see buildings A, B, C, and D. Those have been constructed. You know, the montage provides a variety of services at these buildings, whether it be pediatric doctors' offices, primary care physicians, the breast care center, which you are the planning commission is familiar with. Sleep related study services. There's a lot of different services provided out here. Building E is the building on the right that's proposed here with the associated parking lots and montage does have planned services at that building here as well. And it's also worth noting, I did review montages. Actually, it was then Chomp's master plan for kind of the future of of Chomp's healthcare. Mainly at their site, but it did envision, you know, the development of satellite sites throughout the peninsula and Monterey Bay area, and it included the Lot 27 site. So this is something that has been planned for over two decades now. So project description. So what are we looking at today? It's construction of a 50,585 square foot medical office building, 21 space parking lot on the north side of the building, 130 space parking lot on the south side, new landscaping, new driveways, et cetera. The new building is smaller than the original two buildings proposed in this location in terms of both footprint and floor area. And then the project does require the removal of 524 trees, three 318 of which are protected trees in under the city's tree ordinance. And that means they are the ones that require the tree removal permit because of their size. They have a greater than six inch diameter at a height of four and a half feet above grade. Montage proposed 78 replacement trees as part of landscape plan, and I'll show a slide of that landscape plan later. And then the project also included removal of 15 central maritime chaperone clusters totaling about 5,500 square feet. And then replacement of those at a two to one ratio on site of totaling 11,000 square feet on site replacement. So here's the true aerial of the site today. You can see I've highlighted in orange there the the project location. This is the location of the trees that would be removed. The maritime chaperone habitat and the original sighting of the two buildings proposed in that location. And then, as I mentioned before, this is the last phase of the PUD. It would result in less overall floor area coverage and parking than originally proposed. So this is that same location that I highlighted in orange on the previous slide. Space, the basic site plan for that for the development. And I'll quickly go through the design, the north elevation, east elevation, south and west. And there are some renderings that I think kind of show the the scale a little bit better, but generally it's a it's a modern design to kind of match a lot of the 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 buildings that are have already been constructed, large concrete formed surfaces, wood veneer paneling, composite wood veneer, stucco siding, aluminum windows, steel beams and columns, flat roof elements with with parapets and standing seam metal roofing at some some roof elements. Landscape trees include Monterey Cypress, Coast Live Oak, Box Elder, Madron, Maidenair Trees, Swan Hill, Fruitless Olive Tree and Valley Oak, and then various bushes and ground cover are appropriate for the Monterey Bay area. So this is a southeast view of the north elevation. So you can see the turnaround areas where patients are currently being dropped off for for services at building D, which is constructed. That's the building on the right there. Building E for the proposed building is the building on the left. Here is the northwest view of the south elevation. Another view from the south elevation. This is the south entrance. And this is the view kind of in between building E and D. Looking towards south. So here's the landscape plan. This kind of identifies generally the areas that these various types of plantings are proposed. And then the actual individual plantings are shown on on this detailed plan. So a PUD amendment. So what is the need for the PUD amendment? So what what the PUD did was basically set lot sizes, parking on each individual site, building footprint on each site and and floor area for each site. And so in that regard, the amendment here is really just changed a lot, you know, changed to those four items, lot size, building footprint, floor area and parking. And really, it's just kind of shifting. You know, in terms of lot size, shifting one lot, you know, area from one lot to another. You know, as I mentioned, the building footprint is being reduced to one building location, floor area is being reduced by about 5,000 square feet. And then parking is also being reduced and and mostly being moved to that common area parcel. And so this is a table from your staff report. And basically, if you see the middle column, it's the approved plan unit development that shows a lot size. Table one shows parcel one. It's being reduced, you know, by about point seven acres. The lot size, the building footprint is being reduced pretty significantly by about 37,000 square feet. Floor area is being reduced, excuse me, it's about 3,000 square feet. And then parking is being reduced, and that's because overall floor area is being reduced and parking is being shifted to parcel five. So anyway, I think that the point of this is just to show there's no net increase in acreage for the project. There's a reduction of floor area and there's a reduction in lot coverage and parking. So the city code does have a section regarding approval of PUDs. And so the staff made the findings for the amendment here. And basically the staff found that the developers financially able to carry out the project. The project's consistent with the general plan and area plan. Finding three doesn't apply to this project for commercial developments. Finding for this project is in accordance with the city requirements will not have significant adverse effects on surroundings, which is detailed in the SEQA study that we're asking the planning commission to consider today. And then the last is that this project is an a harmonious and integrated plan that's appropriate for this location. So moving on to the lot line adjustments. So as I mentioned, so the the left image shows the existing condition, the right shows the proposed. And so as you can see, basically, this portion of this parcel one here in orange is is going to be this is the most drastic change is going to be cut off in this areas to be added to the common common parcel five here. There are some slight changes to the the lot line kind of juts out a little bit in this direction. And you know, it's a it's a minor change, but it's really cleaning up of the lot lines so they can locate their parking on the common area parcel is is really the impetus for it. And then so the the city code does also have findings for lot line adjustments and staff made these findings as well. The lot line adjustment is between four fewer parcels. It conforms to city requirements and the PUD allows less than standard lot sizes typically in the IR zone. There's a minimum lot size of, I think, several acres, but the PUD process does allow on on overall sites greater than 10 acres to have less than standard lot size. So that complies with that standard. Number three is that the proposal informs that the change would allow the proposal to conform with building ordinances and would not have any effect on existing utility easements. No tentative parcel map or final map is required by the city. The lot line adjustment will be reflected in a deed recorded by the city and record of survey prepared by a licensed surveyor and the project complies with the permit streamline act. So that concludes the portion regarding the PUD and lot line adjustment. I'm not sure if we want to take questions or or move on.
It's a good question. Do you have questions of the staff?
No, I don't.
I do. Somebody does. Yes, sir.
Explain with the the project that savings permit streamlining act is.
So that, yeah, so the permit streamline act, basically, this it's it's this is kind of a weird finding, but generally, the permit streamline act means that the that the city staff has to comply with specific time limits in terms of reviewing the project and providing comments back to the applicant. So in that regard, it's not something that the applicant necessarily has to provide. It's something that the city has to comply with. In the case of this project, you know, the applicant actually waived their permit streamline because we kind of took the process in a little bit different order and brought the project to ARC first.
Since this occurred in oh two, does that permit streamlining act apply?
So it applies to the application that was submitted in 2022. So they submit an application in 2022 for the lot line adjustment or 23.
But not back to oh two.
So the the oh two application was for the vesting tentative map. It's just a different, completely different permit.
Thank you. I have a follow up regarding this. My understanding is the permit streamline act applies to any development project in California. So why would there be a special finding just for this project since it's universally applied?
It it's it's in our city's ordinance. I admit it is kind of a funny requirement in the city's ordinance.
Yeah, I agree. We can probably remove that in a code amendment in the future, but right now it requires that finding be made.
Yeah.
And in this instance, we do comply with the act, so doesn't pose a problem.
No more questions?
Uh, Carrie has one.
So thanks, Chris. On the on the survey, there's some shaded areas. I assume those are, I mean, the the lot appears to be pretty flat. But do the shaded areas show the parts over 25% grade? I was just curious what those meant.
Yeah, so you're right, and I don't think I have that on my PowerPoint here, but there are there are two two different shaded areas. There's areas over 25%. There's a couple of small areas, and then there's more of like a diagonal hatch that's areas that are greater than 15% and less than 25%. And that's where the most of the project site is shaded. But there are some small areas kind of near the existing stairs kind of right here.
So the but but there's such there's just little teeny parts. So the the 25% grading are, you know, slope rule doesn't apply. There's just little bumps on the
Yeah, I mean, I didn't think that they were within, they they weren't large swaths of the the project site. Yeah.
And then I I assume the whole tree and appeal issue will come up later.
Yes.
Okay.
Any minute now.
That's all. Thanks.
No more questions?
Chris, we can go ahead and skip to the slides to cover the public comments received since this was kind of noticed all as one. So we'll go ahead and address those.
Okay, well, let's we'll get through the various slides before we take public comment. But so I only have one other slide or two slides before we get into the public comments. I'll talk about the addendum, and then we can address the public comments that are about the addendum. So so and the original initial study mitigated and the original initial study mitigated negative declaration for the overall medical office park uh was adopted in two thousand two. Uh, generally, addendums are prepared when there are minor minor changes or or additions to a project. Um, in this case, the project was modified. There's you know, the building slight location change, they're, you know, consolidating two buildings into one. Um, so staff prepared the addendum based on that. And so um, the modified project, the conclusion of the addendum is that the modified project would not result in new or more severe impacts than were observed in the uh original ISMND. Um, there are some mitigations associated with the addendum. Uh, basically, uh, reestablishing of the chaperal habitat at a two to one ratio, which I previously mentioned. Uh, avoidance of of wood rats and wood rat nets prior to nests prior to construction. A worker environmental awareness program training, basically biological training, uh, allowing workers to identify biological resources. And then pre-construction surveys for bumblebee nests. Um, so we did get a couple of comments regarding the addendum. Uh, the first was from David Dilworth, uh, who raised concern for the potential habitat for the Yadens piparia, Yadens rain orchid. Uh, and the response to that is that the the project biologist uh provided a response that was added as a public comment as well, stating that a survey was performed and no evidence of the species was found. Um, the city's consulting biologists also did a survey and found no evidence as well. Uh, and then lastly, uh, the Fish and Wildlife staff confirmed that the site is not identified as containing critical habitat. So uh, staff recommendation here is to add that information to the adopting resolution for the addendum. Um, the next comment was from Rachel Mansfield Howlett, uh, who raised concern for the adequacy of the uh addendum and that an EIR is required specifically citing issues with VMT, the analysis of VMT greenhouse gas emissions and the Yadens piparia. The response is that the addendum includes that modification to the pro- project results in reduction of overall scope scope of development. Therefore, the VMT and the greenhouse gas emissions would be less than originally approved. Um, and then the prior response I mentioned on the last slide regarding the orchid, that this site does not uh appear to contain critical habitat for Yadens piparia. I couldn't, I don't know if there's a discussion we want to talk about before we go into the appeals.
Um. There's one, there's one question.
I have a question. Um, so I want to make sure that I understand and other commissioners as well that when a project scope is reduced and it's uh discovered that the impacts are less than what was originally established in saying earlier EIR, then that in itself uh would not trigger a new environmental study or an EIR. Is that? Is that correct?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Mike, no.
Yeah.
Yep. No guts. Okay. Uh, let's let's go on with the with the rest of your presentation.
Okay. Uh, so on March first, twenty twenty three, the city rece- received appeal applications from both Lorna Moffett and Montage Health. Um, and then I've just cited the city code uh appeal section, which states upon hearing the appeal, the city council or planning commission shall consider the record and such additional evidence as may be offered and shall find whether in its opinion error was made.
By the ARC? Or by?
By, yeah. Error made by the ARC, correct. Um, so I I have a really brief slide for both appeals and I really just prefer that both the appellants explain their appeals in more detail because they have a lot more detail associated with their appeals. But generally, Lorna Moffett has appealed uh the architectural review and tree removal permits based on the impacts to existing vegetation vegetation as well as uh impacts to environmental factors due to the project. Um, those include various things that Lorna can explain in more detail. Um, likewise, uh, Montage Health has appealed the project specifically the ARC condition to replace the removed trees at a three to one ratio uh onsite, offsite, in lieu or in a combination of those um, based on generally based on the following, the the existing overcrowded forest at the site uh and unprecedented replacement ratio. Again, Montage also has more detail on their appeal that they can explain further. Um, so just some further background. So I did meet with the city forestry staff, the the two city foresters. And their opinion is that the site cannot accommodate the additional replacement trees at a three to one ratio. And that a three to one ratio may result in overcrowding of trees at other locations. The city foresters recommended a minimum replacement ratio of one to one or two to one with replacement trees to be planted at offsite lots owned by Montage Health. I think the planning staff here is is recommending a two to one ratio. Um, so in summary, we're looking at three uh three three resolutions for action on uh the amendment to the approved plan unit development uh and the lot line adjustment, which includes changes to lot sizes, reduce lot coverage, uh, reduce floor and reduce parking. Uh, adoption of the addendum, which analyzes impacts uh from the modified project relative to the original initial study mitigated negative declaration and then the appeals that I've just mentioned. So staff's recommendation is to approve the PUD at lot line adjustment uh and lot line adjustment, adopt the MND addendum and deny appeals with modified conditions.
Thank you, Chris. Um, something I have to do um for for a situation where we have a where we have a uh appeals is ask everyone here whether we've had any ex parte discussions about this with anyone. And uh, for me, I have not. Um.
No.
No, no, no.
I have not.
No, I have.
Okay.
No.
I have. Had used the had used that, uh. Um, okay, so let's see staff presentation, fellow presentation. Okay, so um during the during this this appeal, these appeals, um, I'm going to give uh the the appellant and and the and the and the other side fifteen minutes each. And uh, and uh, hoping, hoping that maybe we can get through that.
Chair Dawson, I have a question for staff before we get to that.
Okay.
Um, Chris, you had mentioned, if you can go back a couple of slides, the ARC. Here it is. Um, had recommended a three to one ratio for the replacement. What was the basis for that?
Um. You know, I think I think the ARC they went, I mean, they really went back and forth with what should be replaced. And I I think that they you know, were sad to see uh this is a pretty big forested area. And so I think they wanted a lot of placement trees. Um, there was discussion of of other projects in the city where trees were removed. Um, that's also part of Montage's appeal as well, but but I mean, I think they just wanted to see more trees throughout the city.
Hmm.
So the trees don't necessarily have to go back into the site per se.
No, and the the
It's just part of the
The original condition, when when we talked about, you know, the replacement, you know, a a three to one ratio of three hundred and eighteen trees, we're looking at, you know, nine hundred and
Huge.
You know, forty, almost nine hundred and fifty trees, um, which uh just from my own experience at that site, uh, it it can accommodate for that many. So um, the ARC at the suggestion of the staff uh requested that that nine hundred or the the three to one ratio of those three hundred and eighteen trees be replaced in a combination of onsite, offsite, you know, in lieu fee if they could, um, but any way to basically provide as much replacement in in any form that's possible under the city code standards.
Does the seventy eight trees that the applicant is proposing, is that included as part of this?
Carrie.
So i- if you can go back to your last slide.
The last.
I mean, the the very final one, summary. Um, well, I think it was, there was another one after that. There you go. So um, deny appeal, deny appeals with modified conditions that maybe I missed it. But do we understand what the modified conditions are?
Uh, yeah, so the the main modified condition is, I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear is is to require a rather than a three to one ratio is a a two to one ratio.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought. And that is done just by the ARC, I mean, the the planning commission's basic action can modify that condition. And there you go. Right. Okay, thanks.
And then that's just on montage property.
Yes, uh, and it can be on their other look, other offsite locations, correct.
Chris, could you reiterate that the minimum ratio for tree replacement is one to one and the maximum is three to one? Is that correct?
One to one, two to one, three to one.
Uh, the the minimum that was recommended by the forester was one to one. Yeah.
But but what, but then the maximum per city code is three to one?
Right.
Okay.
Okay. And the one final thing that I had to do with my little cheat sheet here is at the end of the uh of the of the speaking of about the uh the uh um appeals, um, montage will have a fifteen minutes rebuttal at the end of it. So we're not, we're not there yet. Okay, um. I'm going to read this off. Do not, it's it's recommended deny appeals of architecture review committee approval of tree removal permit for two Upper Ragsdale Drive. Appellants Lorna Moffett, application and owner Montage Health mitigated negative declaration adopted on November fifth, two thousand two. Um. I think it would be, it'd be a uh easier if we did these one at a time. Um, because it it could be a little confusing otherwise. So let's go with uh three, two. Deny appealed architecture review committee approval of tree removal permit for two Upper Ragsdale Drive. Appellants. Okay, so can we hear hear from uh Lorna first?
Thank you, commissioners, for um giving me this time. However, I do need more time. And under the Bagley Act, it does state that if the commissioners are um giving themselves more time for an appeal uh that the public does have that option as well. So I feel like I'm being cut off already. Uh, not able to give you the full spectrum of this uh this project. So I also have a guest, John Perlin, who is the author of A Forest Journey. And he's an expert in removal of trees, what this is going to cause to this area. And he is going to be calling in and he's going to need a little more time and and also
Lorna, would you please speak more closely into the microphone there?
Could you hear what I just said?
That's good.
Did anyone, or should I repeat it? Is the microphone off? It's so I'll again, I am asking that I have more time because um I I need more time to present my case. And also I do have John Perlin, who's going to call in. He's a author of The Forest Journey and uh he is an expert in what happens when you remove uh trees for a parking lot and the role that trees play now in global warming. And uh the removal of any tree is very, very much in detriment to us all. Also, as far as rebuttal goes, um, I would like to have a rebuttal time too to chomp in case that and I may not need it, but I am, I may need it. So I'd like to have more time. So I have two um uh things that I need to to address. The first is the addendum. Um, do I get more time or is that it?
Let's maybe let's
I mean, already we're counting, counting down.
Um, if you don't mind my interruption.
You've got a lot of time and I really need to have time as well. So I'd like to have that fairness.
Right. So to clarify, we'll have to open up public comment on the addendum. And there'll be a vote on that separately. That's item number one on the agenda. And so that's not an appeal type situation. That's just uh legislative action and that'll be open to all the public to speak on that. Then on the appeals, um, it's up to the discretion of the chair on the amount of time to a lot to each party. It should be equal. Um, I'll note that when we give oral argument in appellate court, we're limited to ten to fifteen minutes. So I I think your offer of fifteen minutes was fair. Um, and then the applicant, because they are the party with a property right and interest involved um is allowed to give rebuttal uh after the public comment and 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 to have the last word, in other words, um, because they are the applicant.
Yeah. So so you're saying I should I should go back to square one and do it?
I just wanted to make sure Ms. Um, Moffett understood she doesn't need to comment on the the PUD amendment.
I do.
Right.
Very important.
But not it, not during your appeal. It's a separate.
No, this is separate. So I'm I'm um commenting on the addendum, which is very much depending on your vote uh concerning my appeal. So that's why it's so important that I comment on both issues.
So I don't, um, if I'm sorry, pardon my interruption. Um, Chair Dawson, why don't we go back to your original suggestion of taking them one at a time and starting with number one and um opening that up for public comment. And I think he set the time at three minutes. Um, and then you can deliberate and vote on that and then move down to the different appeal hearings at at your pleasure.
S- sorry, sorry, Lorna, but we we're trying to, we're trying to get this uh very complicated thing done. So so I'm going to ask for public comment um before before you speak. Okay, so that so that public has a say. Um, do we have any, anyone who's ready to comment on uh on this, on the on the internet?
I think we're no one to.
Nobody. Item number one.
For for item number one, Ms. Moffett is considered a member of the public. She's not an appellant. Item number one is not a appeal hearing. It's it's a legislative uh process.
All right. So I do have a question on the um L alignment. And how will that affect the trees and the car traffic?
The lot line adjustment?
Will it affect the trees or the car traffic in any way? I shouldn't speak. I didn't understand that.
No, it's just a change to the the basically the parcel lines. Um.
So I think um at this point, um, Ms. Moffett can ask her questions in public comment. And then after public comments received, the public hearing will be closed and we can respond to public comment. So each person at this point needs an equal amount of time. Usually our our time is three minutes
Right.
to start. And then on the appeal, Lorna, it sounds like the chair is interested in about fifteen minutes. Well, the addendum is very important. That's part of my appeal. So without the addendum, I don't have much. You know, I can't present the whole picture because the addendum um is at this point illegal and I want to prove that with my lawyer's letter and why it is. So if I don't have chance to even do that, I just hope that you have read Rachel's letter. She's an expert in um EIR's traffic uh analogies. So that's really important.
So maybe for the chair to consider, since it seems difficult um um to bifurcate the conversations, might maybe you give the equal time now to both appellants and we'll just to have everything heard, one, two, and three at the same time potentially. If you want to, or you can separate it, which would be three minutes, fifteen and fifteen.
I'm already confused. Please.
Just just from a procedural standpoint.
Um, I would agree with that approach that Ms. Cole presented and that Ms. Moffett suggests as well, uh, simply because they're all
You're suggesting we do this holistically, the whole?
I would suggest that simply because the lot line adjustment and the PUD and the addendum are so closely tied together. And we're all basically analyzed in the same document and discussed together in the staff report. I think it it, um, at least from Montage's perspective, we're okay with hearing them all together.
Okay, it's a deal.
Commission's pleasure.
Okay, so I guess the consensus is we're going to do all of these three at once. And uh, uh, so I'm looking for public comment.
Yeah, so
This will be three mi- three minutes.
So it'd be So Mike, I'm uh Chair Dawson. If we're going to do them all together, then you would need to go back to your original, either give Ms. Moffett ten or fifteen minutes to speak. Montage Health would have ten or fifteen minutes.
Yes.
And then public comment would be at three and then Montage Health would wrap up with. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Uh. Okay, so we'll start with with Ms. Moffett once again.
And Jennifer, can you change it to fifteen minutes?
Fifteen minutes and and you have a little timer right by your, right by your microphone there.
Yes, so it's already started. Well, okay. So the addendum denies all harm regarding the two Ryan Ranch project. It ignores any health concerns regarding air pollution or the removal of four hundred and eighteen It ignores any health concerns regarding air pollution or the removal of four hundred and eighteen trees and the role in cleaning up air cond- uh, pollution. In regards to the vested map legalities, planning commissioner staff report actually summarized that it will be an improvement. And I quote, additionally, the city has not found that the project would result in dangerous conditions to the health and safety of the community. Indeed, it is found that contrary is true. How can the contrary be true? Taking away a forest for a parking lot is better for the community? Trees absorb pollution under new findings, new findings. Science has now concluded that car pollution is a significant, and I'm re- repeating, significant cause of early onset of Alzheimer's and dementia in children and adults alike. This wasn't known twenty years ago when this project was first formulated. Car pollution is now known to be a number one significant cause and it should send chills down all of our spines. Do all these people in standstill traffic at Highway sixty-eight have any idea they are being assaulted by these dangerous gases that their car filters do not filter out? And is Chomp talking about this or the role trees play in absorbing those pollutants? What pollutants are removed by trees? Tiny pores on tree leaf surfaces called stomata take in air that includes toxic pollutants. Once inside the leaf, the gases diffuse into intercellular spaces and may react with inner leaf surfaces. This means pollutants like SO2, NO2, CO2, and ozone are permanently converted when inside the leaf, the very pollutants that cause Alzheimer's and dementia. And Chomp wants to remove them for a parking lot. The addendum collusion, uh, conclusion, none. Uh, if you could show that addendum, um, right there, there's none. Uh, no harmful effects, air pollution, none. Um, even though there will be five thousand seven hundred more daily trips to Ryan Ranch via gridlock Highway sixty-eight, which planners of the past created and yourselves, because you didn't address mass transit solutions back then, and now added to that a total of fifty thousand more daily trips? When everything is said and done and you're just going to let them build another parking lot? When are you going to a- address this huge elephant in the room that is killing our brains, all of us? All of us now in this particular community. The new findings are horrifying. Traffic pollution is destroying our brains and giving us and our children early onset Alzheimer's and dementia, lower intelligence in children. And these are new findings and the trees help to take away those pollutants. But according to this addendum, this is not significant and we need to allow Chomp a parking lot. The newly enlisted endangered Yaden's organ is not even mentioned in the addendum, which of its own accord should trigger a new EIR. Because it's newly listed as endangered and might wish to live in that part of the region. There is no mention of what the forest cleans up in terms of greenhouse gases or fuel particulates that are destroying our brains. It just denies there's no greenhouse gases from removing that forest. It's not significant. Well, you see, this is the problem with humanity. It is in denial and that denial is the death of us. Because this isn't just about trees. It's about how we are treating our planet and ourselves. If we had the wisdom and the will to put nature first, knowing that if we take care of planet Earth, we have a better chance that it will nourish and feed us as opposed to destroying us as it is now doing. Trees are our saviors and we need every tree right now because that forest is giving us so much. It is cleaning our air, absorbing the global greenhouse glasses that are causing havoc rock across the world. Millions of refugees now all over the world and, and Paruro are same here. It's happening. Okay, we can no longer just allow parking lots and shiny cars, the comfort. And you are responsible. You're the planners. You're the ones that need to say to these developers. If you want to develop in our community, you are going to have to come up with a mass transit solution because we're not going to allow you parking lots anymore. We can't do it. So I want to read my lawyer's letter, the five page. The, she says, as explained Supra, and I hope that you read this, fewer impacts is not the standard. The project must result in no impacts in order for the addendum to be considered adequate under SEQA. So this addendum isn't even adequate. In light of the remaining greenhouse gas impacts and considering that no mitigation has been proposed, the EIR must be prepared to assess the project's greenhouse gas impacts and propose adequate mitigation. And that would be mass transit. Health impacts due to air quality must also be assessed for the amended project. According to the addendum, there is no air pollution health threats. The project's impact due to vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gases create a fair argument that the project may also render air quality impacts that must also be assessed in the EIR. The addendum also fails to consider the presence of special status endangered species Yaden Piperia Orchid. As evidenced by the letter submitted to the planning commission on about August seventeenth by David Dilworth in support of Lorna Moffett's appeal, the potential for the occu- occurrence of the federally endangered species Yaden Piperia. Could you show a picture of that beautiful orchid, please? Must be first assessed prior to further consideration of the project, Mr. Dilworth confirmed. The proposed site contains native Monterey pine habit, primary habit for the lovely federally endangered species protected Yaden Piperia. The two thousand one SEQA approval has no mention of the Yaden's Piperia and necessarily has not mentioned of the orchid in the two thousand seven federally credit critical habitat designation. Neither the old MND or the addendum address the potential for impacts to this federally protected species. For the foregoing reasons, the addendum must be rejected and an ERI prepared in compliance with the law. So I'm asking you on behalf of yourselves and your own children and your community. We have a very dangerous situation here right now at Highway sixty-eight. And now another five thousand seven hundred more daily trips added to that already congested area. That's not even being addressed. No, just put in the parking lot. It's your responsibility to say to, uh, you know, to, to, to Chomp, no, you need to go back and come up with a mass transit plan. And finally, I'd just like to say that there is only two buses that go from Salinas to Monterey in, on Highway sixty-eight. If there was buses going every fifteen minutes during peak hours, people could take them. They would have to be comfortable. They can't be noisy and they can't be, you know, stopping here and there. But they would go directly to that area and Chomp needs to come up and devise these. And there's no carpooling program with Amback anymore. I used to call them and be able to go up to Santa Cruz. It was no problem. So the land use prob- uh, the land use and, um, the, the general plan is not being followed at all. And it is illegal at this point to allow that addendum. It is your responsibility to say no. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moffett. Can we hear from the, uh? You have more?
I keep going.
You still have six minutes left.
She has more.
So. Planning commissioners, I'm asking you to accept my appeal based on the letter my loyal, my lawyer, Rachel Howitt sent to you and which I quote the last pages, which I just did. Okay? Um, and the, the main thing to me is there is no mention of the particulate air pollution that the two Ryan Ranch project will generate in the ISMD environmental report. And that is because there's no measurements being taken by the air board for these particulates that are destroying our brains, all right? And our children's brains. There's no, I called them and asked them, there's none, no measurements. And what you need to do is deny that, uh, you need to, to, to say to the air board. Look, you need to start measuring in that area how many pollutants there are. We need to know how, how dangerous your project is going to be for you to properly assess in the new EIR, just what those particulates are. And, um, the cauldron garciduanus at University of Montana and the newly published study and proceedings of National Academy of Sciences, they conclude that annual average PM two five concentrations from traffic and fossil fuel combustions are significantly, okay, significantly associated with the development of dementia and Alzheimer's disease. And the two Ryan Ranch project was developed twenty years ago when climate change and the disastrous effects we are all witnessing were not happening to the degree it's happening now. Climate change was still debatable. Katrina was unimaginable. So was Houston underwater and Texas frozen. Texas can't even grow their crops in certain spots now because it's too hot and their livestock are dying. Because when we get an ambient temperature of a hundred and four degrees, that constant temperature photosynthesis stops. And you want to grow, plant more trees here in an area that you're creating a hotspot for and you're not even studying it? But you've got to become more green for all of our sakes and for your own children's sakes. They have no future at this rate. This project was developed before studies were proving that particulate pollution was causing to brains. This is new findings. So under, you have to, under the new environmental SEQA laws, you have to address new findings. And you're not, you're just glossing it over and saying, oh, no, it's okay. It's not okay. It's killing us all and you have a responsibility to your community, to your children, to everyone's children that we have got to address right now. The mass transit, the pollution that's going on, the traffic, and especially at Ryan Ranch, what's that causing? And I know we need to, to, to donate that forest. And it would be great if Chomp said, we are donating that forest to the children and we're going to develop a great mass transit plan for everyone to follow through on. And those children at Ohana Project there, studying those brains, that those children can go to that forest and lay in hammocks and have picnics. And we can all rejoice that we did the right thing for our community. Thank you.
Can we hear from, uh, from Montage? Please introduce yourself.
Afternoon, Chair Dawson, members of the planning commission. My name is Cody Phillips. I'm with Anthony Lombardo and Associates on behalf of Montage Health. Um, the, the project before you is a proposed medical office building. It's referred to as MOBE. And it will provide access to much needed care for residents of Monterey County, specifically with respect to cardiology and urology. The, as, as Chris mentioned in his staff, or his staff report, the, uh, size and scope of the proposed building has been reduced from what was originally approved for this parcel through the Plan Unit Development PUD for the Ryan Ranch Medical Campus that was approved in two thousand two. When that project was approved in two thousand two, as we've discussed, both in the staff report and, uh, Ms. Moffett just mentioned, there was an initial study and met mitigated negative declaration that was prepared. And that was pursuant to SEQA. And what that document did is it analyzed all the environment, potential environmental impacts resulting from the development of the site as a medical campus. Certain potential impacts were identified in the MND, particularly with respect to biological resources, including trees. Mitigations were imposed on the project at that time to mitigate the potential impacts to biological resources to a level of less than significant, which is required under SEQA. Unless you want to adopt an EIR and didn't need to do that. The project was conditioned, for example, on tree replacement as recommended by the city forester, which we have done. As a condition of approval, well, the, the approval of the PUD and the subsequent filing of the final map had the effect of effectively vesting the use of this PUD as Chomp's Ryan Ranch campus, including the amount of square footage that could be constructed on each of these individual parcels. As a condition of approval on the project, the proposed buildings, including MOBE, were required to obtain ARC approval prior to the issuance of building permits. The process that the development of the other buildings on the campus have gone through over the years since two thousand two, when this was approved. Most recently in two thousand nineteen with the Breast Care Center and, um, of course, there's buildings A and C that were also built. The project was heard and approved by the ARC in March and was subsequently appealed to this body. Ms. Moffett and her counsel frequently refer to this project in their correspondence as if the project approvals had not taken place and assert that an EIR should be prepared for the project due to unspecified traffic, GHG, biological and air quality impacts on the environment. For example, Ms. Moffett repeatedly states that the project will generate, she says in her letter, sixty-five hundred new trips. She just mentioned fifty-seven hundred new trips. However, that number is for the entire Ryan Ranch campus, which was approved. This particular project will generate about fourteen hundred trips in contribution to the entire, um, overall traffic count. Appellants counsel, the letter that she just read, takes this position while acknowledging the reduction in impacts resulting from the project. This is a quotation from, uh, her attorney's letter. Quote, while it is true that the amended project will net a smaller square footage building compared to the original project and will result in the production of fewer cars and less VMT impacts. That is not the end of the analysis. In order for an MND to be considered adequate under SEQA, the MND must mitigate all impacts to insignificance, not just result in fewer impacts than was previously studied as asserted by staff. In fact, the original MND that was adopted in two thousand two did mitigate all impacts to a level of less than significant. The fact that the proposed project, the amended project, this before you today, further reduces the potential impacts by reducing its scope and size is confirmation that the project will not result in new or increased environmental impacts. The addendum goes into detail on these items with supporting data to demonstrate that with respect to traffic, there are fewer vehicle miles traveled due to the reduction in the size of the proposed building from what was approved. The addendum shows a reduction of over one thousand VMT versus what was approved in two thousand two and a commensurate reduction in level of service impacts. As for greenhouse gases, there are over one hundred metric tons fewer GHG emissions generated by the proposed project versus the project as approved. Appellant also claims that the project will impact air quality, as we just heard. However, there are no impacts to air quality caused by this project. The addendum provides a breakdown of the emissions generated by the project and they are all well below the thresholds of significance that are established by the Monterey Bay Air Resources District. And I would direct you in your packet under item number five, item page ninety-four, packet page one twenty. It has a chart of all of the different pollutants and the, uh, allowed emissions for each, uh, for, for each of those pollutants, the thresholds of signi- significance. And the proposed project does not exceed any of them, not even close. For example, um, Ms. Moffett referenced particulate matter ten that has a threshold of significance of eighty-two and the, uh, project will generate less than one pound. Additionally, appellant and another member of the public, David Dilworth, assert that additional environmental analysis should be prepared because of the federally listed Yaden's Piperia. Mr. Dilworth stated in his comments before the last planning commission meeting in general public comment that the site contains critical habitat for the flower and this is definitively not the case. Over two thousand acres of critical habitat for the flower were designated in two thousand seven by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and this site was not included in that designation. The nearest subunit of the designated critical habitat is near Jack's Peak, the Cross Highway sixty-eight over a mile. The nearest subunit of the designated critical habitat is near Jack's Peak across Highway sixty eight over a mile away. We confirmed with U S Fish and Wildlife Service biologist Chad Mitchum that the site is not now and has never been designated critical habitat for the orchid. Additionally, though the critical habitat was not designated until 2007, the species was listed for protection in nineteen ninety eight, three years before the project came to the city initially. The initial study and the M N D from 2001 found no special status species at this site, which would have included the listed Yaden's Piperia. Fred Ballerini has conducted two surveys for the flower specifically in the past five months, and both surveys produced negative results as no individuals were found. I'll just read a, a quick snippet from Mr. Ballerini's latest addendum that was submitted last week. Where he says that the, the fact that no Piperia were observed on the subject Chomp parcel this year during an above normal rain year further suggests that no Piperia exist on the project site. Additionally, as detailed in the August eighteenth, twenty twenty-three biological memo, potential supportive habitat conditions are marginal for the Yaden's Piperia to occur on the parcel and historical grass sand habitat and grazing practices of the land prior to the development of Ryan Ranch in the nineteen eighties would further suggest that the Piperia unlikely existed on the parcel during the Rancho Sosito ranching era. Ringcon, the prep, those, the outfit that prepared the addendum, excuse me, also conducted biological surveys this summer as they were preparing the addendum, and they did not find any evidence of the flower or habitat for the flower. There is no designated critical habitat on site. There are no individuals on site. And the site conditions dating back to when Ryan Ranch was grazing land indicate that the flower likely never would have been on this property. There is therefore no new information regarding this flower that would have any impact on the status of the existing environmental document or the commission's ability to adopt the addendum. There is no substantial evidence in the record, which is the standard for determining whether or not there needs to be preparation of an E I R. There is no substantial evidence in the record that would support a fair argument that the amendment to the approved project that's before you will have a significant impact to the environment, whether it be G H G, traffic, air quality, or the Yaden's Piperia, as demonstrated through the addendum and in the surveys that were prepared by the biologists. Based on the foregoing, Montage would respectfully request that the commission deny Ms. Moffett's appeal. Finally, Montage also appealed the project approval from March, requesting modifications to the three to one onsite tree replacement condition imposed on the project. As staff points out in their report, the ratio cannot be supported onsite in the limited area available for such replant. And the city forester stated that a one to one or two to one replacement would be acceptable. The tree replacement that was required for building A on this campus was one to one. And the ratio that was required for building C was one to three. One new tree for every three that was taken out. I think it was eighty seven replacement trees for two hundred and sixty to be removed. So a, as a result, Montage would request that the commission consider the one to one replacement instead of the two to one replacement in line with precedent for this exact campus in the past for the other buildings that had been constructed. I will also just quickly address some of what we heard since I have a couple of minutes left from Ms. Moffett. Ms. Moffett referenced on a couple of occasions a need for an, basically a mass transit or, you know, alternative transportation program. Chomp has one in place for their employees. That's provided in the letter that we sent on August seventeenth. And that would be in your packet. I don't have the attachment number. But there's a list of, of alternatives that are provided to employees. There's a ride share program, a park and ride at Salinas Marina and Seaside, a shuttle from Pacific Grove, free bus passes that are given by Chomp or Montage, I should say, as well as bicycling, walking and guaranteed ride home policies. She also mentioned fifty seven hundred trips. As I mentioned, that's not the trip count for this particular development. Finally, she, she mentioned that we shouldn't allow more parking lots. I just want to maybe state, you know, the, the fact that this is not a commercial parking lot or even like a park and ride. This is a parking lot that will provide access to patients, most of which, or some of which will be ill, all of which are going to include care and need to park relatively close to the facility where they're seeking help. Not everyone, it's not feasible for everyone to be taking a bus or some other, you know, alternative transit if you're a patient and you're in need of help. So with that, I will reserve the rest of my time for rebuttal. Thank you very much for your consideration.
So now it'd be appropriate to open it up to public comment.
Yeah. Public comment. Anyone in the audience? Yes, sir.
Hello, Bob Ballas. I'm a resident of Monterey and thank you all for your hard work here. One thing I can say about the governance in this city is they do a great job of looking out for the diverse views of what people need and want. Anything we do, there's someone on the other side of the position that doesn't like or likes it. But you do a good job balancing that. And that's what we need to look at here is a balancing of what's really good and good for the community and society here. I hang out with a lot of people that are more elderly here in Monterey, which is easy to do. And medical is a big thing that it's really hard to get an appointment with a doctor. There's a lot of services that are needed that are not fulfilled. That's one of the things we need to look at, a balancing against what negatives there might be. The other thing we can look at is we can take a general theory and grow it into something emotionally that's bigger than it is. I could say, I love saltwater fish. I love growing them and having them and just having them in my home and all. But if I put them in eighty percent saltwater in a bucket, that's a terrible thing and they're going to die. But I take that bucket of water, I throw it in the ocean here in the bay, how much impact do I have? That's what we have with this parking lot. How much impact is this one little parking lot going to have on the whole city of Monterey? As much error and all the traffic is going on there already. We're going to have a balance that's occurring of people coming in, the growth that we have, and we unfortunately will need more parking because that's just part of it. But there's a public benefit of having new facilities, new places to go, et cetera. The government does a great job of looking out as a developer and being involved in development myself, I can guarantee you. Government does a great job of E I R's, environmental studies and people having their words to come in and prevent things. There have been many projects prevented just by the smallest little thing. I always think of Mojave Desert project that was to rebuild an old gold, ghost town, gold area. And it was a major impact boost for that community, but someone came up and was worried about eighteen seventy, I think it was. A biologist discovered what he thought was a special red toad frog or something that was in the middle of the desert. Unfortunately, his closest habitat was about five hundred miles away, but, and he was a biologist. He didn't know any better. It was discovered later that it wasn't there, but it killed the project and we can't do that. We've really got to look and balance out what's good for the people in the community. This community could use a project like this. I can worry about the fact that the salt is bad for my fish, but in the end, in the big picture, it's not there. We actually have more trees in this world in the last twenty years than we've had in history. I mean, it's really growing because, and I can show facts towards that. You can show that the number of trees in the Amazon has grown, the number of green trees out there are there. But the small number of trees you're going to remove here is not going to have an impact. And I'm, I love the environment. I want to keep it pure and good, but we still have to balance things out. So trust you're looking at this and I have the heart for the people who have those concerns. But we got to look for the greater good, which is getting medical services to people. The fact that it really isn't going to be a great impact for our air quality and breathing. And just trusting your decisions. And thanks for the time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the audience? Is, is there anyone on the internet with their hand up?
Yes. Um, yes, there are a few hands raised. I do believe the first hand raised was a phone number with the last three digits nine zero two. You should be able to unmute at this time by pressing star six.
Thank you. This is Nina Beatty. I oppose the tree removal by Montage Health. And I ask you again to look at the overhead photo of this woods. The negative declaration is deficient and there are new circumstances that affect the approval. The new circumstances in 2002, the urgencies of climate change and oxygen reduction and the rights of nature didn't exist. They were seen as something fringe and that could be put off into the future after businesses make more profit. They were allowed to keep tearing down habitats where birds, insects, reptiles and other animals live. Some even certainly endangered and killing trees despite the trees are some of our greatest allies in health and well-being. But there are new circumstances, new harsh realities, because the overlying reality was ignored. Reality waits for no one, certainly not for Montage Health. Reality just gets worse if ignored. The new circumstances we can see everywhere, a new urgency that everyone, every business must take to avert planetary disaster. The fires, the first hurricane to hit California since nineteen thirty-nine. The catastrophic winds and weather and heat spells. We just saw Maui burn up and Hurricane Hillary slam into Mexico and California. Glaciers with melting feet are ready to slide into the ocean. Methane, the worst greenhouse gas perhaps, is thawing from the permafrost. Unless it stops, it can poison everyone. Everything is hanging in the balance. It's not business as usual. Political power doesn't equal right. New circumstances mean this project must be reevaluated with today's knowledge and hopefully wisdom. C D F W I would never count on. They falsified photosims on another project and caused severe damage to Lake Tahoe, which has recently been out again in news articles. Montage Health has already destroyed many trees on this project instead of urban infill, and its offices are far away from population centers. And I just want to say a health business cannot prosper without sick people. For example, Chomp hosts cell antennas and collects income even though the E M F emission scientists warn are carcinogenic, cause heart disruption, sleep disruption, brain wave alteration, stroke, immune system degradation, and particularly affect children. Montage has Ohana Breast Cancer Center, the cardiac facility, sleep center, which all profit from the resulting health problems. With lowered oxygen and killing these trees and their ecosystem partners, which provide the collaborative and associative benefits of better health for all of us, not only those with C O P D, emphysema, asthma and other breathing disorders, but overall ecosystem health, which is impacted, leading to more sick people. This plan of Montage is guaranteed to increase ill health and disconnection and dysfunction in our community and drive more people into their doors for treatment, even as they close the doors of buildings in town and move out here to threaten Salinas Valley Memorial's business. I don't support that, and I hope you don't either. Please do what you can and save these trees that give endlessly and are intelligent sentient people and benefit all life. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beatty. Anyone else on the hands up?
Yes. Um, the next speaker is, oh, I think I might have put somebody else's hand down. If you had it up and I removed you, please raise your hand again. Um, the next person who does still have their hand raised is Jody Emerson. You should be able to unmute using the button on your Zoom screen.
Thank you very much. Yes, my name is Jody Emerson. And I'm a resident of Monterey. And I just want to thank the previous speaker. She said it so well, everything that I wanted to say. Ms. Moffett makes a good point when she also says that twenty-two years ago, we did not have the awareness that we have today. Nor that quite the threat of climate change that we are so aware of today. And yes, it's so true, as Ms. Beatty pointed out. Montage stands to profit from the ill health that is resulting from pollution, among other things. So I too oppose this building of yet another building and yet another parking lot. When we could keep Montage's services within the city of Monterey, Monterey, where they have historically been. Why are we moving out into virgin land? We need to build up, not out. We need to preserve our virgin forests. And, and as Ms. Beatty stated, if we need more building space and more parking space, we need to keep it within the city limits and use the space that is, has already been degraded, not go into virgin forest. So I commend Ms. Moffett and the previous speaker for their efforts. I applaud them. I add my voice to their disapproval of this project. There has got to be a better way. And with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Ms. Emerson. Looks like we have one more hand up.
Thank you. There is a hand raised. The caller with the last three phone number digits eight, three, seven. You can unmute by pressing star six.
Hello? Hi, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name for the record if you feel comfortable.
Hi, my, my name is Brian Rosen, and I want to say I adamantly oppose tearing down the native and the virgin forest to put in another parking lot, which is going to attract more and more cars. You know, the highway sixty-eight is stop and go. And all that automobile exhaust is just not good for us. And something needs to be done about the traffic, not, not increasing the amount of traffic, not increasing the amount of gridlock, but the opposite. And let's, we've got all kinds of big parking lots, you know, and stuff. Let's just, you know, do more undergrounding and use the land that we have. We can put parking lots under buildings and we can build up and we can do infill. But I don't think it's a good idea to keep planning for more and more development because it's going to be a terrible world for us to live in. You know, it, maybe it's not all a lot at once, but it adds up over the years. And, and this is just creating a very bad future for everybody. More gridlock, more traffic, more harming the trees and the natives' natural forests, which are crucial for our health. That's being proven. And we got to get beyond just money and create a good quality of life for everybody. You know, when I come on sixty-eight, it's absolutely, actually, it's just gridlock. And we need to bring the train back to Monterey really badly. Train ridership is up because gridlock is up and it's becoming more and more feasible for people who don't want to get caught in gridlock in the, uh, we need to bring the train to Monterey and we need to not keep and have mass transit. But we don't need to be increasing more traffic and taking down these precious forests that are just really important for us. We're all connected. And they are really providing so much ecological benefit for us and our sanity. So that's my comment. If you can just please, you know, have them build something if they have to in Monterey. The infill development, but not tearing down more natural land, which alters the climate. And so thank you very much for that. And I sure hope you, you know, I actually live now in Santa Barbara, but I lived a long time in Monterey. And it's just a nightmare going up there with the traffic and being caught on highway sixty-eight. We really need to get a good train system in there. And we need to improve Monterey and not just get more, plan for more and more automobiles. Otherwise, it's just going to hurt everybody and even end up hurting tourism because people don't want to get caught in absolute gridlock. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else with a hand up?
That was the last hand raised on Zoom. Oh, um, Lorna had mentioned somebody named John Perlin. They are on the line. Um, but their hand is not raised. Is there anyone in the chambers who would like to provide public comment in person?
No one in the audience? Okay, so let's take it, uh, let's, let's take it back to the, to the. Not using microphone. You need to, you need to use a microphone. You need to, you need to use a microphone, even if you are going out of.
So one second.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, but this will reopen the whole public comment period again. We reopen it for one person. Would you reopen it?
No, this is, this is just, please, I have to clarify this because it's not fair. It's not fair. And I need to, I can't be shut down on this because I was given information by Chris that there was going to be.
So pardon the interruption, but this is procedurally not proper. So and I think at this point, and please don't address me while I'm speaking. When you reopen public comment to one person, then you need to afford everyone else the same leverage and the same leeway. You've already had one turn to speak on a public comment, and unless the chair, you already had your fifteen minutes to speak.
But this is a crucial piece of evidence that you were misled on.
Pardon, pardon if I could finish speaking, please. It's up to the chair to decide if you're going to reopen public comment or ask Ms. Moffett to refrain.
Let's reopen public comment.
Okay.
For three minutes.
Thank you so much. You're being so fair. So I just want to say that the whole total trips to that area, once everything is complete, is going to be fifty thousand daily trips daily on top of the gridlock that we have at Highway sixty-eight. And CHOMP has reduced that from fifty-one thousand to fifty thousand. That's my understanding. So.
So and I'll, and I'll correct that. It's, it's, and I have the traffic report open. So it's fifty, the original project with two hundred and thirty thousand square feet of medical office building proposed, but it would include fifty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven vehicle miles traveled, so not trips.
BTMs.
There's, correct, VMT, there's a reduction of that by one thousand with the proposed project, one thousand and thirteen. That's reduction. I can tell the trip counts as well if the committee is interested in hearing that. So the original project included six thousand five hundred and seventy-three trips. And the new project would be a reduction to five thousand eight hundred and eighty-four.
That's right. And so in conclusion, the air board does not, I called them, they do not measure those particulates that are destroying our brains. They do not measure for those particular particulates. So that's why I'm asking, under the new findings of what this is pollution is doing and those fifty thousand new daily trips that are going to be taking place there need to be addressed. And if you could say to the air board, and they are willing to do that, have a study in which they will address those particulants. And we will be able to know then, under the EIR, just how dangerous that area is. Thank you for allowing me that. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Moffett.
So you now need to reopen the public hearing and provide anyone three minutes to speak as well?
Okay, we have the public meeting returning in three minutes.
Hello, Bob Paulus, Monterey resident. Just want to comment towards the public transit, et cetera. We could give everyone bicycles. We could tell everyone there's a train, but that doesn't mean people are going to use it. In this area, people seem to be pretty well ingrained that they want to drive. It's not so tight that you can just take mass transit all over. And we don't even know what the impact will be to the overall environment with the building of that, the materials, the steel it's creating, the roadways and the amount of people that are working there, how much it's adding to the environment and its issues and that. So it sounds good that, yeah, we do a train there, but it doesn't mean people are going to take it. We move it somewhere else, you know, if people are going to be ill, they're going to be needing to go to a facility. And they're going to be driving somewhere. Where are they going to drive? They're going to drive somewhere. And how can I know where to put that to be best? Maybe you try to look at the population center and, oh, we'll get a little more people if we go downtown. But how many miles are you really going to reduce? Particularly, we look at the large number of drivers out there today. Fifty thousand sounds like a lot, but you might consider how many miles are really driven all throughout Monterey in a one-month period and a one-year period, maybe not be all that much. So it's great to make these arguments and it's things we should keep an eye on. But again, I say the government does a good job at looking at it. We look at our air quality in Monterey. I don't do many warning days in Monterey because we have great breezes and all that. Doesn't mean we should be hapless and don't care about it. But I think we're doing a good job of keeping this safe. And again, I want to balance it for the services needed by the general public with healthcare and all that. That's an important item for many people here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone with his hand up?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the caller with the last three digits, nine, zero, two. You should be able to unmute by pressing star six.
Yes, this is Nina Beatty. I just want to respond to the last speaker and also to other comments about trips to the doctor. It used to be that we could drive a mile or two to doctors' offices that were adjacent to our homes. Now we have to drive out onto Highway sixty-eight and contribute to the traffic problems there to get to CHOMP's Montage Health Services. And so what this has done is create more traffic, more difficulty for people who are ill and people who are elderly, they have to drive further from their homes likely may and may be confident driving in town to doctors' offices. But getting on the highway is a little bit too much for them. So then they have to enlist the aid of others to drive them out to these big San Jose-looking facilities that are in Ryan Ranch. So this has been a real detriment to the well-being of the community and their ability to access healthcare services. And I think that's an important part of this whole equation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I see no further hands raised.
All right, let's close the public meeting and.
Montage Health has given an opportunity to rebut because they are the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, it's already five-thirty after five-thirty. Do we want to schedule this for seven?
I think we need to follow through because these guys, these guys are sitting here waiting. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And for the ability to respond to some of the comments that we heard, I would just start by saying that we just heard quite a few comments accusing basically Montage of profiting off of people's illnesses. Montage is a nonprofit organization. I'd just like to remind the speakers of that. I would also like to mention that Montage has dedicated, and this is as to the, to the fact that Montage is a steward of the community and the environment. There were sixteen acres up at the Montage Hospital site that were dedicated to public open space. It can't be touched, and that's pristine Monterey pine habitat. That's where the Piperia might live, is in Monterey pine habitat, not in grazing land or old grazing land out in Ryan Ranch. And that bears out in the, in the critical habitat listing from two thousand and seven. Just a few quick points, just to provide some clarity to this fifty thousand trip versus fifty-one thousand trip, six thousand trips, fifty-eight hundred trips. When the project was approved, VMT wasn't a consideration. VMT was analyzed in the addendum, VMT being vehicle miles traveled. I'm sure the commission is very familiar with, with how those numbers are generated. But the original project accounted for sixty-five hundred, roughly sixty-five hundred and seventy-three trips. That will be reduced to five thousand eight hundred and eighty-four trips. That's trips, that's level of service trips. And that equates to an original approved, allowed fifty-one thousand vehicle miles traveled, which is now being reduced to approximately fifty thousand vehicle miles traveled. So we're not generating fifty thousand trips. And as I mentioned earlier, this specific development, this, this MOBE will be generating fourteen hundred trips, not fifty-eight hundred or sixty-five hundred. Just want to make sure I addressed everything. The, the general feeling as well that this project is somehow increasing traffic on Highway sixty-eight. I would, I would point out that the traffic generation for Ryan Ranch, for Ryan Ranch, all of Ryan Ranch, not just the, the Montage Medical Campus, was analyzed in an EIR in nineteen eighty-seven. And that number, the number that was produced for the overall trips that would be generated of the full build-out of Ryan Ranch, has been looked at for every project that comes forward for approval in Ryan Ranch. In two thousand and one, when this project came forward, the number of trips generated were determined to be far less than the allowed amount under the Ryan Ranch EIR. When it was revisited again in the addendum this summer, as you'll see in your packet, it was confirmed that the total number of trips that were anticipated to be generated by the overall Ryan Ranch campus are still far lower than what was originally analyzed in nineteen eighty-seven. So there will be no additional traffic than what was analyzed even way back in nineteen eighty-seven. I think with that, I will, oh, one further, just one final comment. Ms. Beatty made a reference to not being able to count on CDFW. Presumably that was in reference to the, the letter in your packet from Chad Mitchum, the biologist from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. The Gaden's Piperia is a federally listed plant, not listed on the state register. So the comments that were received were from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. So I think we can, we can pull this back to the group to, for comments and a vote later. Comments, Mike?
First of all, I want to compliment CHOMP. Having been around before CHOMP, I can testify that they've handled me for emergencies and other procedures. And they've kept up a pretty good job of meeting medical science requirements for its client base. And I appreciate that. I've also used this facility, the other portions of it, for me and my family. And it's actually cuts out traffic for me. So if you look at the mean of traffic miles covered to get to this facility versus the original chunk, I think it comes out pretty well for people that live in this bottom end of the peninsula. I do have some questions. We're adding a lot of impervious surfacing here. Where's that running, runoff going to, Chris?
So based on the size of the project, the project engineers have to design a stormwater control plan. So what they typically do, and I don't know the specific details of this project, but they did provide a preliminary one that will require additional review at the building permit stage and by our engineering division, but they typically do it in many different ways. They kind of create swale pits or stormwater containment underground that helps contain large volumes and then allows it to percolate over a longer time period. They actually, the project engineer is here as well. You could probably describe specifically what is done, but that's generally how it's done.
I just noted erosion along Highway sixty-eight during storms. I'm kind of curious. What is the potential for this added square footage of lot and roadway? And where's it going?
Yeah, so there will be onsite required facilities to contain the stormwater onsite, and that will be peer reviewed by our engineering division as well.
Thank you. My next question goes to trees. Were you around when this project came up originally, Kim?
Um, yes.
Do you work on the project?
I think I conducted a plan check on the project and the staff report was written by more senior people at the time.
Looking through the original SEQA worksheet, I saw an awful lot with all the checkboxes on the right-hand side. Looking in hindsight now, this is twenty-odd years later, I don't know if it's a fair evaluation of what we're seeing now, unintended consequences. Because time doesn't stand still for anybody. And our population has certainly increased. The number of vehicles coming to the peninsula has increased. So when you look at what was evaluated back then, what does it take to do a new SEQA evaluation on a project like this?
I'll jump in a little bit. These are really good questions, and fortunately for us, we do have case law that helps us have some guidance in the decision-making here. So first of all, there's a case that decided that before the, the question, so the time for challenging the original mitigated negative declaration has long passed, right? And so the courts have recognized that because of that, the question before the agency now, the planning commission, is whether the circumstances have changed enough to justify repeating a substantial portion of the process. And these principles apply in great force in a case such as this, where the project initially raised so few environmental questions that an EIR was not required, but a negative declaration was found to satisfy the environmental review and the requirements of SEQA. So in other words, back then, it was determined that the review, there were so few environmental concerns that an EIR was not required. And so the, the same principle applies in greater force with this addendum request. And in essence, the interpreting case law emphasizes that the comparison and subsequent review circumstances between the impacts of the old project versus the new, not the new project against the existing environment. So basically, the focus is on the increment of change in the impacts between the two projects and whether that change results in new or worse impacts than were previously disclosed. So the standard is not no impact as Ms. Howlett's letter claims, but rather no new significant impacts. And so the focus of the current review is on whether those changes would be made significantly worse by the current proposal. And there is no substantial evidence before you to suggest that they would.
When we look at, in this case, the trees, we've had a project coming, I believe it was even CHOMP, where we had a surplus of trees, that they had planted a surplus of trees and they had to be cut for this next project. I'm looking at the numbers here of trees. And I tend to agree that the Monterey Peninsula has lost a lot of trees. I just look at Monterey. I've heard numbers of between five and ten thousand trees lost. So when we start talking about, oh, it's just a few trees here, a few trees there, I tend to disagree with the concept. Because the totality is, it's not the city of Monterey that I grew up in. It doesn't have the trees shading the streets that I grew up with, even in my neighborhood. So I do have a piece in my heart that listens to when we talk about trees. Now, the proposal is a two-to-one ratio, as I understand, replacement. And that goes on Montage properties, as I understand it. That doesn't help. Because if we're cutting out trees off of just Montage property and then adding a few there, here, there, well, that isn't the way Mother Nature works. Mother Nature puts trees where she wants them, not where somebody else wants. So even when we put trees back on the streets, we're going against that lady who has the final defining vote. Because I see trees put in. Ten years later, they've died and no one's replaced them. So we continue to lose trees. I don't know where we're going to come out to this thing in kind of a wash. But to me, the need to open up, if the area needs trees, we can't just put them on other people, on the same person's property. We've got to get back to the peninsula of trees that we had in the past, and I don't see it now. When we start talking about this issue, I, I think I'm going to cut it off there because I, I've already, I don't want to just go into somebody else's concerns.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I'm kind of a nuts and bolts type of person, so number one, this is the final development of a master plan, the fifth health building in a master plan of five buildings. Of course, it's out of the barn. I think that needs to be built and the lot line adjustment needs to be made. Where this thing falls apart is in terms of numbers. If eight hundred and thirty-seven parking places were approved, but now nine hundred and sixteen are, that number should be reduced back to eight hundred and thirty-seven. And yet, this particular number five is only going to be adding a hundred and fifty spaces, twenty-one parking spaces above and a hundred and thirty below. The lot line adjustment is for the hundred and thirty spaces below, if I read the map right. So that's this individual case. And how that is affected by the original eight hundred and thirty-seven approved to me is really inconsequential. There is only a hundred and fifty spaces allowed for this particular development. The other place where I think the numbers fall apart is that four hundred and thirty-seven trees have been removed and the initial request by Montage was seventy-eight replacement. Well, that's not enough. And two to one is too many. So to go back and say the tree replacement ratio should be one to one seems fair enough. And I think that that would be my opinion anyway. And they should be of sufficient size. I'm not sure a five-gallon tree is really of sufficient size. I think a fifteen-gallon should be the minimum that's required. And the situation about Yadon's Piperia yedoni, I think it's a specious argument. And I think that the Department of Wildlife and the State Department have shown that clearly. If you can bring in one, uh, great. And if you can see one growing, take it down to the Ohana Center and put it in the entrance. But so far, none have been discovered. So I think that's kind of out of the, out of ballpark. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm really looking at this as an administrative task. I think Chomp is changing their plan. It's a reduction in scope. It's not something that is going to be to the degree that the original plans envisioned. And so that's going to have an effect on all the statistics that we just heard about today. I mean, we're not going to have as much traffic. We're not going to have as much impact on Highway sixty-eight as if they built what they had planned to do. I think it's not fair for us to try to put onto Chomp a lot of the issues that we're wrestling with, with regard to climate and with issues within our city. I think to the degree that they've pointed out, they're making an effort with the carpooling, which they can do within their own campuses with their own employees and with the bus passes and biking, and all those are, you know, moving in the right direction. I think they should be applauded for that. I think that the lot line adjustment is, is just a part of the process to, you know, make the plan that they've currently proposed work within just an administrative level. And so I don't think there's really any fundamental issues with any of the plan that Chomp does have. I would probably follow up with a Mike and Sandy's comment with regard to the trees and you know, just wonder whether Chris or Kim could pass on whether or not if Chomp does a one-to-one or a two-to-one, could they plant those trees on non-Chomp property? Could they work with the city forester to maybe address some of the issues that Mike brought up? I mean, it seems to be unfair for us to try to have them plant trees on properties within the Monterey area that just aren't going to work. And even at a one-to-one, I don't think that's going to be a, a major possibility for outside of the Ryan Ranch area where those trees are going to go. So I like the idea of a one-to-one or a two-to-one, but I really think that we need to be much more accommodating and letting Chomp make that effort viable. So it does have a, a good impact. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Terry?
Uh, yes, I, I would like to thank Lorna Moffett and her colleagues for all the passion and time they put into this. I mean, it's really that you can see they really feel so strongly about the environmental issues that are happening out here. And so, you know, the, it's really a lot of, you know, effort on their part. However, this is an industrial site that was already approved twenty years ago. That I forget if, which analogy applies. The horse is already out of the barn. They've done all of the environmental documents totally to the, you know, the way they're supposed to be done. But what are, we can't disapprove this project. The, you know, the, they've lessened the scope and the impacts from the original approved project. So we can't say there's added environmental impacts here. The Vern Yaden thing, to use another bad analogy, is a definitely a red herring. I don't see how it applies at all. I, I do agree with Sandy's notion of a one-to-one replacement with fifteen gallon trees. I think that's really a a, 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 a condition revision that I could support. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Yes, sir, Peter.
Well, this, sometimes when we get applications dealing with technical environmental issues, the ones that I found to be most difficult as trying to adjudicate is when you have competing experts. You know, you've got a biologist on one side and you've got the biologist on the other, but we, this isn't even close to that. What we have are professional environmental consultants versus what I would probably say would be armchair consultants. And so, you know, for instance, the, this whole notion that the Piperia plant somehow is a concern, which was actually not even surveyed to be located on the site, uh, is a red herring. This notion that there's a particular pollutant in the air that causes Alzheimer's disease. I think if that were true, everybody in this room would be suffering from Alzheimer's.
Everyone would be.
So I'm not convinced by that argument. I think the, Cody, the, the attorney for the applicant did a compelling job of rebutting just about every single bullet point that the, that the appellant made. Now regarding the tree replacement, I do agree with Sandy. I think that one-to-one at a fifteen gallon is probably the best compromise here. However, I would also suggest that the replanting of these trees ought to be on Chomp property for maintenance. Otherwise, they're going to lose control and the tree's going to die. One thing I wanted to also point out, and this is just following up something that Mike said that kind of caught my interest, was this whole notion of what's going on with storm water. My understanding, and I'd like to have staff clarify this, but my understanding is that part of the, any discretionary review that requires a, a negative deck would have to have as part of the application, a stormwater plan. And I was wondering, when you made the comment, well, that's going to happen for building permit.
Sure, I'd be happy to clarify. So we have a concept plan that's usually, that is submitted as part of the planning supplemental and that gives general, the general approach to the site. And then the exact numbers and the finite engineering happens at building permit stage. But the, the preliminary stormwater plan is reviewed at concept level. It would be a planning entitlement.
And that was part of the package for this application?
I, yes.
Okay, very good. So, you know, I, I, you know, I think there's a lot of comments here that this is a project that is already out of the barn and it's a reduced scope project. It's, it shouldn't be controversial. And that's kind of where I stand on this.
Train has left the station.
Yeah. I agree with the, with the, the, the group that a one-to-one, one-to-one tree replacement is, is practical, especially the fifteen gallon. We, we've just done a, a little project at my house and we only had one replacement, one-to-one, which was okay, better than, better than five hundred and seventy-five or whatever that number was. But and, and I agree that the lot line adjustment is, is, is not a big deal. I think that's trivial. And the, oh, I guess the, the appeal, the appeal for the art, art texture review about the, the trees, I think that's, that one-to-one should stand. And let's have a vote.
Would you go back to the screen, the last screen where you put one, two and three, what you recommend? The staff recommendation?
Oh, yeah. True, that's it. The amendment and lot line.
And we want to take a vote on each individual item?
Would you like to?
I think so.
Okay, so let's, let's vote on the approved P O D amendment, amendment and lot line adjustment.
I move to approve the amendment to the planned unit development permit for a lot line adjustment. And addendum to the mitigated negative declaration adopted on November the fifth, two thousand and two, related to the project. Also.
We have a, we have a, a motion and an amendment. The second. We want to do a, a roll call?
I mean, you don't have to, but you can. It's up to you.
Let's do a roll call.
Okay, Chair Dawson.
Did you say Dawson?
Yeah.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bluth.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher is recused. Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Latosa.
Yes.
Commissioner Silva.
Yes.
Okay, so that was the first motion that approved the permit amendment and also the addendum to the mitigated negative declaration.
Can we have a, can we have a motion on item two?
I'll move to deny the appeal of the Architectural Review Committee's approval of free removal permit for the two Upper Ragsdale Drive project.
I'll second it.
Now, that's the one, that doesn't.
We're not talking about the tree replacement.
Okay.
This one.
Okay, okay.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Okay, we have a roll call?
Brassfield, I thought Commissioner Brassfield seconded.
I already seconded it. Oh, sorry.
Okay, so for the vote on that, Chair Dawson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bluth.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher is recused. Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Latosa.
Yes.
Commissioner Silva.
Yes.
Okay, so that denied the first appeal. And then is there a third motion regarding the tree replacement?
So we're going to have a, a motion for number three?
I can do that one. Deny appeal of various conditions of approval in the Architectural Review Committee permit for two Upper Ragsdale with modification stating that the tree replacement will be one-to-one.
At fifteen gallon?
At fifteen gallon trees.
And I, I suggested that we have it on property that would be managed by the, by the owner.
Did you get that?
On three.
This motion has an amended conditions of approval stating the one-to-one ratio.
Yeah, and that's.
And fifteen gallon.
From two-to-one to one-to-one.
At least fifteen gallon?
At least.
And planted on property owned or managed by Chomp.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. So I have this final motion is to deny the appeal, but change the approval of the original.
Yeah, so the, the action is to deny the appeal with an amended condition of approval for a one-to-one replacement with fifteen gallon sized plants on property owned, owned by Montage Health.
Owned or managed by.
Owned or managed. Thank you.
Okay, so for that, I have Vice Chair Bluth as the motion maker. And then is there a second or for that motion?
Mr. Brass.
Brassfield.
Thank you. And then for the vote, we have Chair Dawson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bluth.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Fletcher is still recused. Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Latosa.
Yes.
Or Silva.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That motion carries, they all three carry actually. And this is appealable to the city council with the forms found at the planning office within the next ten days.
Before you.
Before I drop my gavel?
Yeah, I just want to thank staff and council for being here to support us. This is a complicated one. Appreciate it.
Yeah, no kidding. Okay, it is six oh three.
First order of business is continued public comments on matters not on the agenda. Seeing no one out there. Is there anyone with his hand up over there?
There are some attendees online already, but just a reminder, members of the public are encouraged to join our meetings via Zoom Gov, a secure service that connects you live with no lag time. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey with a 10 second delay and Comcast channel 25 with up to a 90 second delay. If you would like to provide public comment, please join the meeting using Zoomer by telephone, making sure to join in time to accommodate delays. To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone number is on the agenda posted at iSearchMonterey.org. Since the meeting has begun, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, dial 833-568-8864 toll-free. Once again, that phone number is 833-568-8864. It is toll-free. Then enter the webinar ID 1619908039. Once again, the webinar ID for this meeting is 1619908039. If prompted for a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions for using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. Please turn off TV or computer speakers or go to another room all connected as background noise interferes with the broadcast. Public speakers will be called upon in order of hands raised. There is a three-minute time limit for today's meeting. Please stay within that limit. There is a hand raised. This is for comments on non-agendized items.
Yes.
What was that?
Not on the agenda.
Yes, not on the agenda. Yes, not on the agenda, there will be a chance later to comment on both of the items that are agendized, so right now, the last three phone number digits with 705. Please state your name for the record if you feel comfortable doing so.
Yes, good evening commissioners, I just have a comment concerning the last meeting, which is not on this agenda. And that is that Commissioner Sylvia stated that what I was citing as far as air pollution evidence causing dementia and Alzheimer's in the brains of developing children as well as adults with armchair science. And that was completely untrue, if the proceedings for the Academy of National Sciences is armchair science. I don't think we can ever trust science again, I mean they're peer reviewed and also the Colin Gar Sijuanis at University of Montana. You know, they're these, these studies have taken 20 years, they've taken brains of deceased people and children and analyzed them and this air pollution particulates that they name called magnetites, iron oxide is what's destroying our brains and the fact that we as a, as a social entity are in such denial, denial happens to be one of the first symptoms of dementia and I think our society is in a state of dementia because we are not reacting to the emergency of climate change. And we are in denial and then people such as Mr. Sylvia stating it's armchair science is very, very harmful. And it, it denigrates science at its best. He doesn't know what he's talking about, he didn't even read my, my appeal obviously. And it can be very, very harmful, so all I'm asking you commissioners from now on, please start asking what went with these developers, you're going to have to come up with mass transit plans and you're going to have to save trees. So how are you going to do that? That's not up to us, it's up to you. And if you do that, you will slowly, hopefully in time reverse in our city the terrible browning that is happening, our traffic and our noise and the pollution that's not being measured by the air board and they've admitted that, all those things that I gave you as evidence that you do not wish to look at are harming everyone, including yourselves and your family. So thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you ma'am. Is there anyone else? Hand up.
I see no more hands raised.
Okay, so let's go on here. Consider 812 Munrus Avenue use permit UP 23-0168 to allow modifications to an existing New Singular Wireless PCS. It's an eligible facilities request. I mean, the existing building rooftop. Can we have a staff report, please?
Sure, yes, we have online contract planner Jerry Hiddleman. And he should be able to share a screen and walk us through his presentation.
I do have another hand that just went up, I believe that possibly they wanted to comment on a non-agendized item, if you'd like to reopen that.
Okay. Let's go.
Okay.
Okay, Jerry, just hold on for us just a moment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy, good, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Yes, I'm sorry, I pushed raise hand too soon, I want to comment on the 812 Munrus Ave. Agenda item, so I'm lowering my hand.
Thank you, you will have a chance to comment after the applicant has your chance to speak.
Okay, so we're doing, we're doing a staff report.
Yes, thank you, you can go ahead Jerry.
Okay. Let me.
Oh, it's Jerry.
Second, I'm just trying to unmute here. Can you?
We can hear you.
Oh, oh, good, okay. Good evening Chair and Commissioners. As stated, this is a use permit modification project at 812 Munrus Ave. UP 230168. And here is the project site, as you can see on Munrus Ave. And Fremont Street up here, El Dorado Street down here. And it is a existing hotel building. So the owner of the property is Bulleby and Milam Patel, General Partnership. The applicant is Greg Davis, J5 Infrastructure Partners, and he's representing AT&amp;T, also known as New Singular Wireless LLC. Zoning designation is visitor accommodation facility district, it is a motel. The general plan designation is commercial. So basically the scope of work is to remove nine existing panel antennas, install 12 new panel antennas, remove three existing remote radio units, RRUs, and install three new RRUs. They're removing two cabinets and replacing those with two new cabinets in the support equipment area that I'll show you on one of the next slides. And then they just installing other coaxial cables and other support related equipment. As stated, this proposal is considered an eligible facilities request under section 6409, that'll class tax relief act. And it's not considered a substantial change per the FCC definition. And because of that, they have what's known as a 60 day shot clock, so when the application is deemed complete, it has to be an action within 60 days and that would end on October 12th, 2023. Here is the site plan for the site, we have Munrus Ave out front. Here is the antennas on the roof, there is existing antennas inside a little cupola structure. Then there are some cables that connect the panels. The antenna panels to some support equipment in back of the building right along here. See that in more detail in these slides. So again, the existing equipment is down at the ground level, it's not visible to the public, it's behind the building and behind fence over here. And they're just replacing some remote radio units and cabinets, as you can see, and this is the proposed improvements at the ground level. Now, existing in the cupola structure on the roof, which we'll see in more detail later, are nine existing antennas, they're arrayed over here, 369, and some support equipment behind them. And then they'll be doing 369, but these ones actually have what you'll see one antenna above the other, so that adds up to 12 new antennas. So here's a view of the elevation of the building from the back, shows the antennas on the roof in an existing cupola. So they are behind what's known as fiber plastic screens, fiber reinforced plastic screen, FRP screens. Blend in with the building and then you can see the cable coming down to the support equipment down here. So they are just replacing all those nine antennas and then going to 12, because you could see there are two antennas here, two antennas here, one above each other, smaller antennas that will be replacing the one antenna that's there currently. So here's a view from the front. You can see a little bit of the structure up here, nothing's going to change on the outside, it's all inside the, this cupola structure. So we of course have an RF study that was done for the project and it shows that it the new antennas would be compliant with FCC rules. So no public, public safety limits are exceeded at the ground level or at any adjacent properties. So per the ordinance, and as you've seen in past projects, we do require an elevational view of the RF emissions or RF arrays. And green is the safe zone. This would exceed public limits in the blue going out in these two directions. And then this would be exceed the occupational limits here, and this is we guess a red zone right in front of the antennas would be the safe place to be, so as you can see, no adjacent properties are affected at a ground level, we, there is no emissions that exceed FCC rules. This is just a site plan view of that same RF array exhibit, so the blue again is the public limit, the yellow is the occupational limit, and this is just right next to the antennas right there, so it is red. Their view, this is actually a ground level, it shows that there's absolutely no emissions that exceed public or occupational limits at the ground level. So as you probably familiar, we do have a number of RF conditions on this project. Post installation RF coverage report is required within 30 days of installation of the new antennas, so they have to prove that, yes, they are meeting the public and the occupational limits that we just saw. And this is per the new ordinance. And RF exposure training is required for all workers that have access to the roof support equipment areas. The, and of course, at that access point, there'll be contact information. Unique site number will be displayed, need to call the operator. And then the appropriate RF alerting signage is also displayed at that access point and around the roof area to show areas that are in excess of the 100% general population maximum permissible exposure level. So with that, they do comply with FCC rules with the updated Monterey Wireless Ordinance. And we recommend that you approve use permit UP 230168 with the recommended findings and conditions of approval. And I'm available for questions, I believe I saw the applicant is here also as on the Zoom call. If you have any questions for the applicant, this is just another view of that existing cupola. Thank you.
Thanks Jerry. Yes, sir, Peter.
Jerry, could you please go back to the slide that showed the graph of the radiation waves around the building? Yeah, that one. I'm curious, what happens if the neighbor, either neighbor, the one on the right or the left decides to go up and to a point where potentially there could be a harmful impact on the neighboring structure and people inside that, is, are there any city policy regarding this? Is there anything that would prohibit the neighbor from going up?
Well, yeah. I, I don't think there's any prohibition in the ordinance or the municipal code I'm aware of. But the building department is aware of this project, they have to issue a building permit. And the, they can alert this property owner that if they wanted to go up to maybe this level, that you know, their roof might project into that public limit. So that would be one way of determining that, but there's nothing in the ordinance that prohibits them from expanding their, their building on their site.
So do, do, do the neighboring property owners receive some type of notification then? That, that you know, if they were to expand and go up, they would potentially be exposed to a hazard, how does that work?
They would receive the public notice, just like all property owners within 300 feet, so that would be how they would be alerted, but they would have to look at the files to find this information.
Right, the public notice itself is just generic and it doesn't really get into this kind of granular detail regarding a potential future hazard.
Correct.
Thank you Jerry.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just a quick question, is this the Days Inn?
Yes, I believe it is.
Seems like a really large antenna, this is an area of one story and some two story, but not many buildings, seems like a kind of a broad reach for a small neighborhood like that.
It's a three story.
This is a three story Days Inn?
Yeah.
I've got to go down there and look again then.
And I'll just also add to Commissioner Silva's question, the neighboring structure is already at a two story height, and there's a little bit of a slope from the project site down to that site. But there is a chance, I mean, that they're already at their high limitation with that. But it would be reviewed and that, as Jerry pointed out, that would be part of our review for any additional height increase of that structure.
Jerry, two questions, number one, what's the definition of substantial change?
A substantial change would be if they as per this slide, if they were to go out greater than 20 feet in any direction or greater than 10 feet in height with this panel antennas. Which they're not, they're just replacing them right in place over here. So they would be in conformance with the FCC regulations.
When I look at 6409, I think the intent is to replace and update the existing equipment. And normally it's an exchange of, we're going to take out six and we're going to put in six. Well, when you look at these numbers, it's not like that, so that's why I asked, what's the definition, because if they're pulling out X number of antennas and adding more, is that a, a new addition or is that just a 6409 exchange?
It, it's still considered a 6409 exchange, as long as they're, they meet those physical dimensions I just mentioned, so they're not changing the physical dimensions and actually the two no antennas are these smaller antennas that are replacing the one antenna over here. But no restrictions on the number of antennas or there is a restriction on the number of cabinets that could be exchanged, so you can't exchange more than four cabinets down in the support area down here.
Yeah, thank you, that added a lot to my knowledge base. On the notification issue we've had in the past, where you have more than one company in an area. We have some, I think you have at least three companies putting the equipment into that small area. And each of them has notification requirements and, and signs that say, if you have a problem, call this number. The last time I looked at one of them, I had, had three different companies, all the different numbers. So if an first responder is going up there, is it a, a normal habit to call all three of them? Or four, if that's the case, to make a notification to shut down, because looking at the yellow, it doesn't appear that if you shut off one and left the others on, that you would be out of a danger area. So how do we, how do we examine that?
Yeah, that, that's a good question, on this project, there is this only, only the one wireless company on this project. But as you pointed out, on other projects, there are quite a few. So I can't speak for the fire department, but I you know, I would think that they would at least choose one of those, and if they didn't get a response from the carrier, they would go to the next one. But we'd have to ask the fire department that question.
Well, when I spoke to the fire department, they were a little concerned about the multiplicity of the notifications. And that's, I think it's a concern because I walked into places where all of a sudden I'm standing before a sign says do not enter, and here I am standing there. So I would like to examine this issue and see if there's something that we can maybe address in the ordinance. So I would like to examine this issue and see if there's something that we can maybe address in the ordinance. Because in my mind, if we have three or more different companies, they all need to be notified if a first responder or problem solver needs to go that area.
Yeah, we, we, we can contact the fire department and explore that.
Yeah, and I'll add to that. That's a, that's a great point, Commissioner Raspil. And yeah, I'd be happy to engage in a dialogue with the fire department to better understand what their needs are and responding. It'd be my assumption that in that event, they would cut power to the entire property before addressing that issue. But that is just an assumption. I'd like to have that conversation with the fire department.
We need to know.
Yeah, just as a point of reference, there, all those systems have battery or generator backups. So you'd want to have a main switch that could be identified by first responders that could then be readily shut off if they do need access to the roof space.
I don't think we've addressed that in our ordinance. That's why.
Yeah, it would be, yeah, you would, you definitely having more than one point of contact information to be say, hey, I'm here, I need to do something. But it should say reference. In emergency, this is where the breaker box is for this, and it will have an emergency button that will shut the generator off.
I, I would hope that, I would hope that the fire department knows that and police.
Don't the, don't the fire department go out there periodically and say, okay, if this was a problem, what would we do next?
In my, in the conversation, they do go out there periodically, but we're putting in new equipment. And I don't, I want to make sure we're notifying them. That we're adding a new company and so forth.
Yes. So they're, they're definitely notified during the building permit process. So they're, they're part of the review process. But these are all excellent points that we'd like to, like I said, we'd like to address this and we can, staff can begin that conversation. So that if it's not addressed in the ordinance, then we can properly condition these projects moving forward.
Thanks, Jerry. Thanks, Levi.
Thank you.
Anything from the end? No. I have a question. Is there, is there a telltale like that you could wear on your, on your, on your belt? It says, it says beep, beep, beep if you're in a high, high RF zone?
That, that is not something I'm aware of. However, that might, may be something, a question better directed towards the applicant. Yeah, the applicant who, you know, works in the occupation may be more familiar with that type of equipment.
So a quick answer on that, there's, you can have a spectrum analyzer which will tell you the RF within a range, but it's the size of a, a a telescope, basically. So it's, it's not a portable device. And I'm not, I'm not aware of any.
I used to have one of those when I was at Ford.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any devices that you can wear on your belt that will tell you, no, that's been two different metal detector well higher.
And not an application.
Yeah, this is not microwave. That's way, way up and.
On frequency. Yes, sir.
So Jerry, that RF horizontal projection slide that Peter was asking about, can you go back to that?
There you go.
And then what, can you show the, the plan view that relates to this?
There we go.
Can, can you identify that building that was, you know, it's shown as just a simple, almost like a monopoly structure to the right?
That would be right there, I believe.
Is there some way you can blow that up? So I mean, I, I can't see anything there that's, looks like that.
I have the street view pulled up right now. That's actually a two-story structure, I believe, associated with the hotel next door. Casa Minus.
Yeah, I can bring that up too. Where is the property? Oh, here it is. So it's this one, I believe. Is that the property Levi?
Cedar Cupola.
So it's that white stucco building with the gray roof beyond?
Yeah, that might be it there.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I don't see the cupola either. I couldn't figure out.
Right there.
So going back to the plan view then.
Well, there it is.
There it is.
Can you show that, the, the plan view again of the RF? So just show where that structure is on this plan?
I believe it's, well, here's one runs. I believe it's this structure potentially. Or maybe. Yes, right, right over there.
Yes, where the cursor is.
One next door.
Right. I, I, I hate to open up a can of worms, but it does make you wonder about an applicant. Let's say the owner of that building hired somebody to come and, okay, I want a permit to add a third story. I don't know with the zoning there, whether they can add a third story or not. I, I mean, there are ways to add third stories in this, in this town, depending on water and everything else. But how would they ever know? You know, there's nothing on the title. I don't, I don't know anybody planning a third story on that building would ever know that this this RF condition exists in that airspace over the building. It's just, it's a, it is a can of worms. I don't quite know what to make of it.
I can weigh in on that.
Beep, beep on your belt.
The, the belt beeper would be helpful.
So as I mentioned earlier, any, any increase in the height would be required to go through development review process to the planning department. We do actually track the wireless facility locations, so we would be able to incorporate that into the review process.
Really? So, so if staff member actually goes and looks at these charts to, to cross check.
There's actually not that many locations throughout the city. A lot of, as mentioned earlier, a lot of the carriers are located in the same location. So that's why I feel like this, this group probably sees a lot of the same types of applications in the same locations. So we have, we track it.
I mean, it's almost like the, if you owned a two-story building and you have the, the right to add a third story to it, and there was this, this hazard that existed in the airspace over your building, that's some sort of a encumbrance on your property. You know, it's kind of, I'm not sure.
Yeah, at that point, I believe the facility would no longer be in compliance with the FCC rules of, with the RF standards, as Jerry pointed out earlier.
Yeah. I, I would think that something that might be useful for the public would be for the city to establish a dedicated database that would link parcel numbers or addresses to these facilities. So that when applicants, before they go through the process and pay the fees to have a project evaluated, they know in advance what's, what's going on.
Yes, that's, that's actually in the works right now. That's part of what we're tracking. And it is our hopes to create a map that then we can then make available to the public that will show where these wireless locations are.
Would that identify multiple threats and hazards?
You mean multiple carriers?
Well, not just this one, but other business types of business, other types of hazards. If you did what all in one map, it would sure be useful.
Right now, the thought is that we, it'd be isolated to wireless facilities and, and association with the new wireless ordinance, but we can explore that as well.
Well, I guess the, the issue is the, the neighboring property's airspace rights in a way. And that they have this hazard, this RF hazard thing in the airspace over their property. And it's just a weird thing. I've never really thought of it.
Would that be denial for, I've been reaching for denial?
I don't, I don't know. I don't think so, but it's really a matter of notification. I doubt if this neighbor is aware of this situation. Well, in, in a way, one can compare this to, as we were talking about earlier, stormwater issues. And currently, my understanding is that stormwater has to be contained on the site. You can't divert it to a neighboring property. What's the difference in terms of that type of hazard and this type of hazard?
But that's not universal yet. We still have properties in the city, around the city of Monterey that put their water onto Monterey streets.
Drain straight to the ocean.
Well, I mean, the only real
Just drain.
Of, of those sort of avenue I'm looking at would be to actually notify this neighbor, hey, there's this specific airspace hazard. Just so that, you know, they, it, it only seems fair that they would be notified. I don't know. Well, the notification for this was just simply a public notice, a kind of a generic public notice. You know, with a description like the one we have here, but it doesn't really get into any kind of impact or hazard.
Well, how many hotel owners would, would know that this is a hazard, A, and that where it is on your map, B?
Well, but that's why I ask about other hazard because a lot of real estate in Monterey is impacted by the airport.
Yep.
And there's no warning to the people in those areas that you're in a danger area. So I'm just pointing out that there's multiple hazard, not just RF, but.
Yeah, well, well, the airport hazard zone is documented in the, in the general plan.
Yeah, it does. But they don't always, if you're building a house on a lot, you don't get a notification from the airport typically. You may have to apply, but you may not get a notification.
If it's close enough, then you have to sign a waiver.
Yeah, I think there's a deed issue associated with it. So my mother-in-law has a home on Del Monte Beach, and they upgraded all the windows as noise abatement. And part of that, I think, included a deed restriction. So it becomes part of the notification on the transfer of the property.
That's why I just pointed out that there's more than one hazard we have in the city.
Correct.
And it would be nice if you had a map that showed them all.
So we don't, we don't include those types of things in a single map. The publicly available GIS does make available the airport safety zones.
I was thinking GIS would be the way.
Yeah, and that's our hope is to incorporate this as a layer into our GIS as well. Again, I'll just reiterate if, if, if there were to be a third story added to the adjacent building and the RF, RF frequency was no longer in compliance with the FCC rules, they would no longer be in compliance with their conditions of approval. So I think that that would be grounds for revocation of the use permit if that were to occur. But we can, you know, moving forward, we can tighten that up in the conditions of approval if the commission wishes.
That's quite interesting. So the, the actions of a neighbor could potentially violate the conditions of approval of an adjoining property owner.
Yeah, suppose the carrier would have the ability to make modifications to the wireless facility to bring it back into compliance, but it could potentially.
Are there any questions from the audience out there?
I believe the applicant online also.
Yeah, we still have the applicant available to make a presentation if they wish to.
There are a few hands raised online. Um, I, none of them look like the applicant. Greg Davis is on the line. I'm, oh, raising his hand. Okay. Greg Davis, you should be able to unmute.
Hi, good evening.
Hi.
So good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Greg Davis. I am the applicant on behalf of AT&amp;T. I don't have a lot to add. Jerry did a pretty thorough job. Just to reiterate, this is a minor modification to an existing site. AT&amp;T is proposing to remove nine antennas and install three, install twelve antennas for a net increase of three. All of these modifications are taking place within the existing screening, so there'll be no visual impact. And the modification will increase capacity for residents, businesses and emergency services in the area. And I'm here to, to answer any questions I can to public ask some questions.
Yeah, I have a question. Can you elaborate a little bit more on when there's multiple carriers in a site? They have multiple phone, phone numbers, how that works from your point of view?
I cannot speak on behalf of other carriers. I know that we have to have an emergency contact on all of our sites. That's a great question. And it does seem like it should be streamlining in the case of an emergency, but I'm not, I'm not sure about other carriers.
So it's every man for himself, so to speak.
I think it would be really smart if you called every door in one of those numbers when you walked in through that door.
Long as, if you have three doors.
Yeah.
And you have different phone numbers and you're up a creek.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any, any questions from the audience?
There are some hands raised online. Okay, I believe that Kathy Good was first to raise your hand. Give me one second. Kathy, good. You should be able to unmute.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
There you go.
Um, I have some questions. I'll try to get through them quickly so I get my questions in in three minutes. I don't know what the current RF radius is and how much of an increase this new one is. Nobody has shown us that. I think that would be very good to know. I don't know what the public safety limit is for RF. I would be interested to know what that number is. I see on the map that of the RF horizontal projection that it present MPE. I don't know what that is. But for the green, it goes from five percent, which is so low, all the way to a hundred, which is right up to the blue. So what, it doesn't seem to break it down enough. You don't know what percentage you're going to have a certain number of yards into the green. And I, I don't think that like, it's very good to think it could be a hundred or it could be five percent. That doesn't make me feel very secure. And also, what about the people who are in this hotel? Are they going to be exposed to a high RF? And like the stormwater rule, I don't know what that was called actually. You know, is there some way that a person around here could block this RF if they did not want it coming into their property? I just think we should not create more hazards. I think there's plenty of, of RF capability in this neighborhood. I don't know why. We need more. Everything works fine. And I don't know what the increase is. So I'd like answers to those questions. I'm done.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So Jerry or Greg, does somebody have an answer for the lady?
Can we, I think we should probably finish all the public comment. And then if we want to direct questions to Jerry or the applicant, that would be appropriate.
The next hand raised had the phone number digits nine zero two. You should be able to unmute by pressing star six.
Yeah, this is Nina Beatty. I have a number of comments. First of all, thirty-three percent increase in antennas would be a substantial change, in my view. The RF modeling is just modeling. Cell towers that were tested nationwide in two separate national tests, a large percentage of them exceeded FCC limits. So there's no guarantee that this won't exceed FCC limits when operational. There were, there's no requirement for neighbors to be, the notification of a potential violation, that should be right up there in front on any notice to nearby neighbors that there's a potential violation. And yet they didn't know that they should show up at this hearing to know that they, their property value or future development potential could be impaired. They don't know that because they just got a generic notice. A map is needed. A number of us have been calling for that for a long time. I hope that that's going to be up soon. There's also no notice to nearby businesses that may be renting from property owners that got the notice but didn't tell the businesses. Or the students that are in that large building that's across the street, the students of Middlebury Institute, they didn't get notices and their parents didn't get notices that there's a cell tower, that they are at antenna height right across the street. There's no signage required by the city for people like me. So that if I want to go into a building, that it warns me that that's, that there are antennas on the roof. And that is a violation of my civil rights. The FCC has not satisfied a federal court remand at this point, and this has gone on for several years now. And so the FCC limits are right now in a state of limbo. There are no safety limits. They only have guidelines and they're not safe, even though Mr. Hiddleman continues to refer to them as safe. They're simply exposure guidelines. That's all they are. There's no safety implied. The, this antennas are not just to interfere with my street access. I don't go down that street anymore because of the antennas. And I wonder if the Patel's, the property owner have And I wonder if the Patel's, the property owner have uh, have EMF hazard insurance. And if this is is a question to the uh, applicant, if AT&amp;T has EMF hazard insurance, that there's no exclusion for EMF hazards. Um, there are monitors you can purchase. Um, handheld monitors and I'm certain that there are our belt monitors you can put on your belt that will have uh, audio alarms when you reach certain limits. There are blocking technologies, but the 5G technology that AT&amp;T is deploying um, is notoriously um, cannot be blocked very easily at all. And since AT&amp;T has been installing them, they come right into the windows, right through the walls. And um, and in answer to what Ms. Good asked, the military said that in their Naval Postgraduate School project that they would be using AT&amp;T infrastructure as part of their capacity. So this is, this project isn't just for the public. This is also going to be likely used as part of AT&amp;T's network for the military. And that's probably not disclosed in all these documents. Um, and that, that deserves extra purview or or review by you and by the city. Um, because that's not what we signed up for. So um, this project, I oppose it as interfering with my access to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, there is another caller. Last three digits are seven zero five. You should be able to unmute by pressing star six.
Yes, I want to thank the Commissioner who's bringing up the hazards. Um, this is something that has been denied. We have a lot of bad technologies that are harming our civilization. And uh, we really have to deal with them all. And RF uh, technology is one of them. Um, there is a study done in which they actually proved that holding a cell phone up to your head, which is the same thing, microwave, uh, actually interfered with blood sugar in the brain. And um, you know, not notifying people next door that may be sensitive, like it could be Nina or me or whoever. It's criminal and we have to protect each other. And so what I've noticed about commissioners and people who are in places of power such as you are, they don't really educate themselves on the matters at hand. And they just wait until there's a hearing and then they take for granted whatever is being said, but they don't go study the issues. And I think you have an obligation to go and really delve deep into the dangers of this RF technology. Microwave ovens have screens for a reason. Microwave phones do not and they can't put screens on these antennas. So we really urge you to educate yourself deeply and profoundly uh, so that you make decisions to protect all of us. And I just don't see that happening. And uh, it's a grievous and it's, you shouldn't be on these councils voting for these issues if you cannot take the time to delve deeply to protect us all because that's what you're there for. And that is the goodness of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lorna.
That was the last hand raised online. And there are no hands raised in the chambers.
Okay, so uh, we, are we asking questions of of staff?
I was wondering if if we could ask a question of Mr. Davis about the shot clock. Uh, is he the one who would, um, if let's say, let's say we want a continuance of the item. I'm not saying that's what the feeling of the committee is, but for notification purposes of the neighbor, let's say that were to happen, could we request, request of the applicant that they give us, you know, that there's a delay in the shot clock until that issue is resolved?
Could make that request to the applicant.
Is Mr. Davis the applicant?
He is.
Yes.
Mr. Davis has already had his turn to speak. If we allow him to speak, I do believe we would have to reopen.
No, he's the applicant. He can respond to the question.
Oh, that's good. His hand is raised then. And it sounds like he maybe has an answer.
All right, uh, so as far as I understand it, as long as AT&amp;T submits a complete application and is deemed complete, the jurisdiction has thirty days to issue comments and then sixty days to approve the application.
Under sixty-four oh nine.
Under sixty-four oh nine, correct.
But we do have some situations where applicants uh, agree to a a stop of the shot clock for this kind of thing.
Um, so the shot clock would stop if, if the city of Monterey issued comments. Um, that would, that would toll the clock. Um, outside of that, I'm not I don't, I'm not sure there's any other. At least in my experience that uh, that would stop the clock.
Yeah, um, this is, this is Jerry. In my experience, uh, you have to have a tolling agreement with the applicant. So that would be kind of a agreement that's reviewed by the attorney and then signed by both the applicant and the city. To, that would temporarily stop the shot clock.
And they, they have to sign it in blood, I assume.
Or something.
Hopefully not.
I don't see any, I don't see any uh, inquiring faces over here.
I'll make a motion.
Please.
Okay, I'll go ahead.
I have some con, not questions, but comment deliberation comments.
Okay, fine.
Um, so when I got in my car and left, you know, came back here for the break, um, I know the first thing I noticed, and I'm sure that most people notice when they get into their car, is the warning label that is attached to the sun visor regarding the airbags, right? And in a way, this is like that, only even though we had a public notice that met all of the statutory requirements. In this case, um, we have a potential real hazard that has been identified by the applicant. It's not just speculation. It's not conjecture. Uh, here we have documents inside the report that shows uh, RF waves extending over property lines and potentially impacting neighboring property owners. But yet, when you read the public notice, there's no indication that there's a potential hazard. And I'm troubled by that. And I acknowledge that this met all statutory requirements, but um, if I were a neighbor and I got a public notice like this, I probably would have just thrown it in the trash thinking, okay, this is a pretty boring subject. Why do I need to?
It was suggesting that how you get the note, the notice to the guy that he's going to read it.
Yeah. So anyway, that that's something that bothers me about this, and I guess all these types of applications where they're dealing with this known hazard. The other, the other aspect of this that I am troubled by, and it it's again, it's the same with all these applications, uh, is the impact on the air rights of neighbors. And so we have a situation where before us, there is a graph that showed potential hazards if a neighbor went up three stories and we were told that, well, that would be dealt with during a planning review application and um, the, the, the conditions on the RF applicant could be revoked, which seems kind of backwards to me. Anyway, those are some things that I'm looking at here and I'm not sure if I'm going to endorse this one.
Well, that's, I I totally agree. I I think um, I'm, I can't possibly vote to approve this one until this situation with the neighbors uh, uh, you know, potential third story addition is resolved and the neighbor is notified. And hopefully the applicant, it sounds like a lot of work, but hopefully the shot clock thing could be deferred while that issue is explored.
We've looked at these sixty-four oh nine issues now for a couple of years.
Yeah.
And you may recall, Terry, that we had very serious concerns about hotel rooms adjacent to the transmitter.
Hotel, hotel, yeah.
And I think that they resolve our questions on those issues. This is a highly controversial topic. I don't know if we're going to get around that. Unfortunately, I think we're stuck with FCC rules. And the shot clock puts a serious burden on the city. If they say no and you go beyond that, then they can just go ahead and build it.
Yep.
So we're, we're stuck in some of those respects. But I, I listened to some of the questions from the public and I do appreciate them. And one of them was about that, that the, there may have been, there've been instances in the past where they put in a site and it's in violation of the FCC's guidelines. Well, one of the things Jerry reported is, is that the city of Monterey requires a report after it's up and transmitting to verify that it's within FCC guidelines. And I think that's one of the things we need to pay attention to. We're trying, we can do the best we can to meet those guidelines. But I don't know if we're going to get around the controversy itself. But.
But most of the time when we have these um, these RF uh, horizontal projection diagrams, it's not quite as blatant where here's the neighboring house with the, the blue cloud right above it.
It's across property lines.
Right, they usually have the same property.
I don't remember actually seeing, we may have seen one before. Maybe Peter just noticed at this time that this is the first time I've actually been aware of this specific.
We, we have shown it with the, and if you, it's some, they've been different colors at different times. But we've actually had instances where different colors were impacting and on the top of the hotel.
Right.
And so we asked the questions and it was resolved. Uh, I think to our satisfaction, and we voted for it.
I think it's important to realize it's in an urban environment and you're going to have this happen throughout Monterey. I mean, you are going to have some overlays. The issue is going to be one of gradations. So you're going to have like in this particular instance where it's in the graphics, it's much closer to the roof line than you might see in other locations, but um, it's hypothetical. I mean, you're raising an issue that may or may not happen. And I can probably guarantee you that the system that's in that cupola now will probably not be there in the existing configuration when somebody adds a third floor to the other building.
But yes, but if I owned that building next door,
I would want to be specifically notified about this hazard. I, I wouldn't want to just have it float by. Well, we thought they should have told them, but they didn't, but they, you know, we sent them the notice, but I, I think in this case, because it's come to our attention, we, we're actually obliged to make sure that that adjacent property owner is, is specifically notified.
I, I think these kind of questions are important because we all have these concerns when this particular topic. And I, I heard Levi earlier and Jerry in the past has, has answered our questions and did the research. And I just hope that continues because I, I don't personally think this is outside what's nor, normal in these cases.
Right. I mean, it could be that, that Levi's original response that, well, that's a two-story building. They can't go up any higher. That might be true.
But it might change next week.
We don't know that. And uh, the, the, I think if I, even if, even still, if I owned that building, I'd want to know.
What if somebody propped an aluminum ladder against that and walked around on the roof?
Yeah, right.
And I would point out that there's a lot more hazardous material in buildings than we know about. And you may be living next door to one and you won't know about it.
Well, with RF, you're in a sea.
Legally.
You're in a sea of RF. I mean, there's RF everywhere. I mean, it's a matter of intensity and closest to a transmitter.
Right.
But there's RF everywhere. Um, in this particular case, it's not really clear that. I mean, it's not in violation. It's hypothetically if they have a third story. So I think I disagree. I think it's, it's really not, um, I think an issue that's germane to the, the issue that's in front of us. With the issue that we're supposed to be voting on does not include that. I think that could be something that we could advise staff on and have staff look into either better communication um, or um, um, better um, documents that allow people to access that information, but as you said before, the train has left. I mean.
Different train.
Yeah, yeah, different left. I mean, those are the rules that we've got and that's the procedures for follow correctly. I don't see any reason not to approve it.
Okay, well, why even, why even adjudicate over it? You know, just rubber stamp it. I mean, that's, that's what, you know, the sixty twenty, that's what they're doing to us.
That's, that's why.
We're, we're, we're asking staff to, 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 to be sure to, to follow up on this. Otherwise, Jerry's not going to vote.
And you, Monterey.
We've had. Commissioners, can I, can I interject for a second?
Please.
Yes, Jerry.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think you're bringing up some great points. We'd have to, and we can explore these, but for the put notice to the neighbors to change, that would have to be a change to the municipal code or the wireless ordinance. Because that's currently not, not in there. And we'd have to, to look at that. And for the uh, RF issue, as long as they meet the FCC requirements, you, it's, you cannot deny the project based on uh, RF hazard, as long as they're in federal compliance. Now, for the planning commissioners, you can look at design issues and other aspects of it, but not the FCC requirements for RF.
Jerry, I, I'm not suggesting a denial. I, I'm suggesting a continuance just to allow the city to contact this neighboring neighbor and let them know that this situation occurred, exists potentially over their property.
I'll just weigh in. Um, due to the shot clock rules, um, I would advise against the continuance. Uh, given that in the event that was continued, uh, and then this commission still chose to deny the application. Uh, and then there would not be enough time allowed in the shot clock for it to be appealed properly to council. And it would be effectively deemed complete upon that. So I, I would advise against the.
Well, may, may I ask, Jerry, the existing equipment has had similar effects to that adjoining property?
Um, I can, we can only speculate, but I would say uh, it is very likely that it, it looks somewhat similar to what we're seeing today.
So this has been an existing hazard. If that was the, the term. But it's an existing condition that sure, the city can, we can figure out a mechanism to make notification, but then I, I don't think I would agree to stopping the clock for this issue.
Dangerous.
But I was, I was coming earlier. The city went through about a hundred and twenty-five meetings before we started actually working on these projects. So we do have a track record and our ordinance, I think, is written fairly well to try to cover as many of those danger areas as we've been able to identify within the legal requirements that we have to abide by. And I, that's why I'm really kind of glad that Jerry mentions that we have that after inspection to certify that these sites are within those guidelines. Because that's in other places, they, they're not doing that. This is an extra step that we do.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I, I would prefer a continuance to allow the neighbor to be notified. I think it's reasonable. But if the majority of the commission doesn't agree, then we'll go on to a different motion. So if I could, I, I'd like to make a motion that we continue this item, allow the city to notify the adjacent property owner about this RF uh, uh, hazard map over their property. And uh, so just allow the notification to happen. And then we would uh, uh, hopefully that could, you know, we could review this again at the next meeting. So that's my motion.
Is there a second to the motion? I think motion dies due to lack of a second.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, um, approve. I'll make a motion, um, approve eight one two Monross Avenue use permit UP. Twenty-three zero one six eight to allow modification to an existing. New singular wireless PCS LLC. DBA AT&amp;T Wireless Communication Facility Section six four zero nine A eligible facility request. Under existing building rooftop application applicant Craig Davis.
Are you going to add a uh, provision that the city will follow through on this?
I think that's already part of their requirement. As part of the. Um, code that exists for this. To check it out, if that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think that's already covered.
Are you referring to the the post uh, construction RF report?
Correct.
Yes, that is requirement of the ordinance.
I'll second it.
Can we have a roll call?
Chair Dawson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bluth.
Yes.
Krishna Brassfield.
Yes.
Krishna Fletcher.
Yes.
Krishna Freeman.
Yes.
Krishna Latasa.
No.
Krishna Silva.
No.
Okay, this motion does still carry with the vote of five. And. It is appealable to the city council with forms found at the planning office within the next. Is it two days? Two days.
Three days.
Three days.
Of Friday.
Here comes another one. Consider three five oh Kai Principal Use Permit UP two three dash oh one eight oh. To allow modification to an existing GTE Mobile Net California Limited Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless Communications Facility. Section six four oh nine A. You remember that? Um, eligible facilities request on an existing hotel building. This is the one on the Marriott. A lot of stuff already up on the Marriott. Uh, can we have a a staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Um, this again is a use permit. Twenty-three oh one eight oh for a. Verizon Wireless Facility and they already do have facilities on there. It's technically a new project, but it is. Um, a patient to another one, so it does fall into their existing facility. So it does fall under the eligible facilities request. So we do have the Marriott, as was stated, uh, here, Specific Street, Franklin Street. And uh, Kaya Principal and Del Monte Avenue are the streets that bound this site. Uh, the project location will be here and on this side of the building, as you will see. The owner of the building is the San Carlos Associates, a California partnership, Eric Lentz of Lentz Consulting LLC. Is representing Verizon Wireless in this case. Again, we're looking at a project in the visitor accommodation facility zone. Uh, commercial general, general plan designation. And this is an unusual project. It does not involve any antennas. Or cabinets or remote radio units or equipment we're typically. Uh, used to. What they're doing in this project is installing. Pull cans um, and conduit. That will um, go from the ground floor, actually a box in the sidewalk, up to the their. Equipment on the top of the roof and that'll connect their equipment to that top of the roof with existing fiber in the sidewalk and street. So again, because it's modifying their existing. Equipment in. Uh. For Verizon, it is a eligible facilities request under section sixty-four oh nine. So again, not a substantial change per the FCC definition. And again, we're looking at a sixty-day shot clock which ends on October fifteenth. Um. Here is the Marriott and as you can see on the site plan, the project will be isolated to, this is the rooftop. Equipment that's already existing. And here uh, we'll, you'll see in better detail that they're going to be bringing a. Some conduit. From this box, it's very small, there showing a large one up through the building and then to this equipment area. So again, no antennas are being replaced and no uh, cabinets or other substantial equipment. So here's the um. I'll start with the enlarged plan down at the ground level. There is a pull box in the sidewalk. You might have walked over those a number of times. It's it's a little box where the cover can be removed and. Uh, it'll connect to a fiber. That goes through the sidewalk here and I think through the street. And then there'll be a conduit that will go from this box to a pull box on the side of the building in this location. And then you'll see it'll go through the building and end up on the roof at another. What's called a pull box in this location to connect to a, some conduit to existing cabinets. That's that's the entire project right there. So this might explain it a little bit better. So here's the. Pull can, which is a smaller pull box, which will be installed on the side of the building. Here's the conduit running to the sidewalk. And then here it is over here and you can see the conduit will go. Through the interior of the building. Nothing will be exposed on the outside of the building to a. Whole box right here and then some other connections to equipment. Again, just a little different view, there's the. Um, pull box, the conduit going through the interior of the building to a little pull can right there. And I should point out that this facility will be inside of the penthouse and it's already screened. Uh, there is screening there for the existing mechanical equipment on the roof. Do have some photo simulation, so here's what it looks like existing on Pacific Street. And then if you can see this, there's the little pull can right there and the conduit will come down and connect to. Fiber and sidewalk. So in this case, no RF report was required. There's no change in the panel antennas. No change in the support equipment, so there'll be no RF impacts to evaluate. And based on just this improvement, um, we are recommending the planning committee, planning commission adopt the resolution approving. Use permit twenty-three oh one eight zero to allow modifications to an existing Verizon. Wireless facility at three fifty Kai Principal. Uh, again, thank you and available for questions. I know Eric Lentz is also online. To uh, answer any of your questions at this time.
Any questions?
Just one. How is the fiber optic cable getting up to the rooftop now?
I'm not aware that there is this connection right now, but um, perhaps Mr. Lentz could uh. Address that question.
Certainly has.
I I, the reason that this has to go to the planning commission is just because of the ordinance and that it's a change to equipment?
Yes, yes, definitely. Any change to equipment. Uh, whether it involves panel antennas or not, uh, has to come before the planning commission.
And just to be clear, there's no transmitters on the roof?
No, no transmitting equipment, just electrical connections with the conduit, pull boxes, which are typical. Uh, electric, electrical, um. You know, a conduit type. Boxes that you you would see for any electrical improvement.
Just to clarify, there's no new transmitters proposed as part of this.
Correct.
More questions?
Did you guys get Sandy's question answered?
Believe we want to refer that one to the applicant if he's available. Right.
The applicant is raising his hand. Um. Eric Lentz, you should be able to unmute.
Thank you. Uh, let me know if you can hear me or I'll just talk to myself. Uh, good, yeah, good evening, uh, Eric Lentz. Um, thanks, uh, Chair and Commissioners and thanks Jerry for. Always for your hard work on these. Um, the question it was, how does fiber get to the rooftop now? Um, good question. Typically, what wireless carriers, um. Even though you have Verizon, T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, whoever it is, will typically. Connect to a local fiber network. So for example, AT&amp;T fiber, but then carriers also like to. Just like if you're at home and you want to um, get a new phone line, you're tired of whatever. Sprint or whoever you have and you're going to change to somebody else. It's essentially what what this plan is, is to install this fiber. To eventually switch over to a different fiber provider. The existing fiber would just would go from the. Pointed connections from from a street, just how this does and go through the building, there'll be. Um, a different, a different conduit run for that because that's was already established in this building. So like the Marriott Hotel already has. For example, like AT&amp;T fiber in the building. Um. And so Verizon and other carriers would just tap into that. In this case, they're looking at utilizing a a different fiber source. Different, different um, company. But um, just to reiterate, just, it is just fiber. It's not. New fiber doesn't mean a new change to the antennas, the radio frequencies. At best, still stays the same. It's just. How that transport comes into the building to the site, whether it's. From one fiber company to the next, it's the same data that comes through. It's just the company that they're sourcing it from.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Motion?
Yeah, how about a motion?
Um. I move to approve. Three fifty Kai Principal Use Permit UP twenty-three oh one eight zero. To allow modification to an existing GTE Mobile Net California Limited Partnership DBA Verizon. Wireless Communications Facility Section sixty-four oh nine A eligible facilities request on an existing hotel. Building applicant Eric Lentz on behalf of Verizon.
Can you hold that back? Aren't we supposed to take public testimony if there isn't?
Oh, well, yes.
There are attendees on Zoom, but no hands are currently raised. If you would like to write public comments, use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen if you're joined by Zoom. Or if you're joined by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. I see no hands going up and there are no hands raised in the chamber either.
Okay.
Comments after the second? I just want to make a quick comment.
We have a, we have a.
We have a second.
We have a what?
I'll second.
I second. No. But I'd like to make a comment on the second.
Yes.
On on this program, this this.
Yes.
You can't.
Item.
Comments.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. I I've never seen in my years of being on a discretionary review panel, a project so de minimis. This is almost absurd. We're talking about a pull box and conduit. And normally, you know, that would just be a building permit, but um, I guess the. The federal regulations are so. Strict that even something that's minor as this has to come before discretionary review board.
I think it's our our ordinance.
Is it our ordinance?
I think so, yeah. Change the equipment, right?
Anyway, that's my just editorial comment.
Maybe, maybe if we see more of these, we could, you know, in the future, simplify the ordinance. This just does seem a little bit. Uh, elaborate to uh, for a wiring change.
Well, the thing, the thing that struck me is that there's two conduits, one four inch and one two inch. Fiber is this big.
For future conduit.
You got a person a second.
Person a second, so we have a uh. Roll call? Please?
Yes, so just for clarification, I got the for the motion maker as Commissioner Freeman. And Commissioner Fletcher seconded that motion. Um, and for the vote, we have Chair Dawson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bluth.
Yes.
Krishna Brassfield.
Yes.
Krishna Fletcher.
Yes.
Krishna Freeman.
Yes.
Krishna Latasa.
Yes.
Krishna Silva.
Yes.
Thank you. This motion carries and it is appealable to the city council with forms found at the. Planning office within the next three days.
We have any. Projects from planning?
Uh, yeah, we have a planning update. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I'll make a comment. You raised something Levi that I thought was kind of. Interesting. Uh, you said, I'm sure you see a lot of these repetitive. Applications for modifications to an existing facility and there really aren't that many existing facilities. And they tend to be in the same places. Every once in a while, there'll be an odd place like the church uh, near Lighthouse Avenue. The on Hawthorne, right? And now this place, this cupola over the days in that nobody can see. And uh, at the risk of inviting, you know, lots of. Angst in the public. Uh, a database of those locations might be pretty helpful.
Staff agrees.
And they job opportunity.
Chair Dawson, I have a comment.
Yes.
Um, so. Levi, we had discussed the possibility of. Considering um, an ordinance change. To modify language on public notices for these types of hazardous RF applications. And I'm just trying to gauge other members of the committee. To see if there's any traction on this, or should we just drop it? What what is, what are the thoughts of other people on this?
I think it makes a lot of sense. Um, if municipal code doesn't have it, then adds an additional layer of comfort to the community. You know, we should recommend it. Um, I'm not sure what the mechanics of that are, but I think. It was clear from the discussion that everybody seemed to think that that was a worthwhile project. And I think Levi was saying that it's in the works, so. Maybe.
Well, that's not in the works. What is in the works is the 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 mapping, the database.
Yeah, but won't it have, oh, you're talking about just the RF notification too, but I think both are worthwhile effort. So. Having the database and then maybe having a more. Formal notification to the property owners about how they can be aware of. Um, the potential. Has been hazardous situation near their property would be a worthwhile thing.
But it it's a, it's a delicate thing because the um, it really would be up to the staff. To.
Yeah.
Do, it's almost like a two-level notification. Everybody gets the typical notifications, but if you're adjacent and. There's a direct impact on your property, it seems like staff would be obliged to give those owners a special notification.
So just a point of clarification, the the current wireless ordinance. Um, does require uh, the applicant to notify properties uh, before the hearing is set. So upon application. They're required to notify property owners within three hundred uh, feet of the the subject site. That uh, that they have applied for a use permit for the wireless. Um, we can certainly explore changes to the to the ordinance that um, require RF notification. Uh, in the meantime, um, we staff can also um. Uh, ensure that there is language in the existing notifications. We do, we we do have the ability to look at the notifications, letters that are sent out by the applicant. Um, it sounds like the commission is primarily concerned with with specifically notating that there's going to be. Uh, potential RF exposure as a part of this application. Um, is that correct?
Yes. In the, in the previous meeting, Kim made sure that we had notification by both the applicant and by the city as appropriate.
Yeah, so staff also does a notification for this, for this meeting. Um, but there is a earlier notification as well, but uh. To my knowledge, it doesn't specify necessarily RF exposure or um, to what extent there would be increases in RF exposure.
So we can. Airspace thing is is a little bit arcane. For if I were the property owner, I got, you know, I would be, I'd have to go out and hire an engineer or an attorney or something. I wouldn't know what to make of that. It's it's an unusual thing.
But at least they're aware.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, it's um, it's really, it would be a major change in. Property rights, I think, around the nation to be able to mandate some. property rights, I think, around the nation to be able to mandate some type of limit to the airspace and the property rights. So I think that would be a very difficult problem to get into. And there's lots of RF, not just for wireless, but there's radars, there's FM, AM transmitters, I mean, it goes on and on and on. So
And then there's the matrix.
Yeah, it could be down there. We could be in it right now. Yeah. Yeah. Cookie to get into, but I think just the idea that you're providing information to the public, which seems to me to be one of the big issues associated with the wireless, um, transmitters and the various generation numbers that are associated with them. You know, the more information that's out there, hopefully the more, um, the public feels that they've got the necessary comfort factor and knowledge to feel comfortable.
Any, any of the comments? Anyone going on vacation?
No. Kim is, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Kim has mentioned in the past that she had the money to allow some training for the commission, this, for this commission. And I would suggest that we have people who have never been to it. And we have a chair. And I would suggest that to keep the chair up to date on what is coming out of Sacramento and other practices within the state that the new people and the chair attend these training sessions. So I would ask Levi to check on that and get back to us on it.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Um, also note that, uh, the California APA Conference is, uh, beginning this weekend. Um, Commissioners are able to, um, attend that as well. Obviously, um, they have an option for virtual attendance for some of the sessions and some of those can often be helpful for Commissioners as well for, um, they often have a legislative update for items coming out of, uh, Sacramento, so, um, but happy to look into other training opportunities.
Because this is late for this weekend, but
Of course.
but we, we're not notified of when they're available. And if you could make that part, a part of a practice to keep us up on when they're available.
Absolutely.
That would be our continuing education, right?
Yes.
Okay. You get
And the last thing is, I think this meeting is a good example. Not too long ago, Dan and I had a conversation about this commission. We don't always agree. But I think that we come to pretty good conclusions that we can, I can agree on. I just, it's a work in progress, but I think it's a great work.
It's funny though, if you look at our votes, I, I'd say that, uh, we're unanimous on eighty, ninety percent of items.
And, and resolution towards that vote.
Right.
But I just wanted to throw it out there.
Okay, we don't have a planning office update?
Yes, actually I do. Um, just want to make sure all the Commissioners had an opportunity to comment. Um, so yeah, just quickly, uh, if you've been following the city council agendas, you may have noticed a couple of planning related items on there. Uh, most recently, uh, at the September fifth meeting, uh, you may have noticed the first reading of the ADU ordinance. Um, so there were no actual changes proposed as a part of that ordinance. There was, uh, an administrative error on the noticing from, uh, there's a time limit from the, uh, first reading to the second reading that has to be published in the, the paper. And that time limit was not originally met, so it's really just going back through that process of first and second reading. So again, no changes to the ordinance itself. Um, additionally, uh, we did have the first reading of the, uh, rental inventory ordinance that went to council. I'm sure some of you may have heard of that. Uh, so it was, um, passed, uh, as amended. Um, and I'll just run through some of those amendments that were made, uh, quickly. Um, basically, uh, the amendments were to specify that the cost share pass through um, for the, for the registration fee, uh, between the landlord and the tenant should include, uh, city form as described uh, in that meeting and explain access to resources and programs and that the pass through, um, excuse me, should be a separate line item on any rental statements. Uh, it also, the, one of the amendments exempted ADUs, JDUs and owner occupied properties from registration fees and, um, and another amendment was to remove the reference to misdemeanor for those, um, properties that were not registered within the required timeframes and replace that language with administrative citation. So that's, that's the entirety of that update for that ordinance. Um, I will note that we do have, um, the joint Planning Commission and City Council, uh, meeting scheduled for September nineteenth to, uh, review.
Next Tuesday.
That's correct. Um, the intent of that meeting is to review the public comments that we've read, that the city has received on the, um, draft housing element. Uh, incorporate, uh, and allow the Planning Commission and the City Council to, uh, take those comments into consideration before acting on the, uh, draft housing element prior to it being submitted to the state.
At seven PM, correct?
That is correct.
I have a question on your previous.
Yeah.
When it's an administrative process, it escalates if you deny, if you ignore it. Is that correct?
Correct. And typically it starts as a multiplier.
And then misdemeanor.
Correct. That's as I understand it as with your typical administrative.
Can't ignore them.
Yeah. And, uh, did just want to, um, going back to the joint planning commission, city council meeting, just want to ensure that we would have a quorum there. So, uh, if you're not going to be able to attend, if you could, let me know, um, now, that would be great. No one's responding, so I'll expect to see all of you. Great.
Was that, um, block of quorum at the August twenty-second Planning Commission a surprise?
Uh, not necessarily at the, at the time of the meeting, but the day of the meeting, I think it was, that's when it was, uh, uh, assumed.
Yeah, you, you try to know that ahead of time.
Yes, and, and this, and I, this is unrelated as to why I've asked. It's just a very, um, time-sensitive meeting on the nineteenth, uh, for the city to meet its state mandated, um, deadlines for getting the housing element certified. And, uh, it is a, um, a large meeting, um, and largely important, um, for that joint city council and planning commission meeting. So just wanted to ensure that we would, uh, make the best use of everyone's time. And that's all I have.
Levi, is there an indication as to how many comments the city received?
Yeah, we received just, uh, I think it was right around eighty, between seventy and eighty public comments.
Seventy or eighty, what's?
Public comments.
Public comments.
On the draft housing element.
Okay, are we done?
I'm done.
Thank you, Levi.
Our seat.